Wonderful.
It's sort of the Belmont version of the White House visit for the.
No, I think that's great. I mean, the boys' team is just phenomenal and was exciting to see them get as far as they did. And the girls' team as well.
Yeah, congratulations to them. I hope that we can get them up here.
Yeah.
Comments from town residents for items not on the agenda. Items not on the agenda. Seeing that, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Actions by consent. Number one, proclamation for retired animal control officer John Magarinas. We have a lovely proclamation. Is anybody here to accept?
John's here.
Oh, good God. You didn't raise your hand or say anything.
I've never done this before, so I'll need a little guy.
Come on up here, John.
Have a seat. You push the button on that microphone, turn it on. There you go.
How are you, John?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess being that this is maybe your last opportunity to read a proclamation, Mark.
Thank you so much. And I just want to say, John, I've worked with you over the years and you've been, I think, a terrific animal control officer, and I think you've educated this community in particular about coyotes and the fact that they are not to be feared. Should deal with them in certain ways. And annual town day, you always have a, I think it's a stuffed coyote, and you talk to a lot of the younger, you know, folks in town about, you know, not to fear them at all. Although I do have a coyote in my neighborhood. But, so we appreciate being better informed of, you know, sort of the fact that there isn't something that we should be concerned about, that they don't create a danger. And I think you've done a wonderful job for our community, and I've enjoyed working with you. So with that said, let me read the proclamation. Town of Belmont, Massachusetts Board of Selectmen proclamation. Whereas John Magarinas, John Magarinas, has been the animal control officer for the town of Belmont since November nineteen two thousand and one. And whereas John Magarinas has dutifully and compassionately served the residents and animals of the town of Belmont, earning the respect and affection of all of the served. And whereas John Magarinas' passion for coyotes has earned him the distinction as an expert educator, teacher, all of us peaceful ways to coexist with this wildlife animal. And whereas John Magarinas taught colleagues how to be good animal care and control officers by imparting his love and respect for animals, animal owners, and caretakers of animals. And whereas John Magarinas announced his decision to retire from the town of Belmont on February twenty first, two thousand and nineteen, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Belmont join with the town in showing their gratitude and appreciation to John Magarinas for his outstanding service and wish him many happy years of retirement. Board of Selectmen, Adam Dash, Chair, Marquee Palillo, Vice Chair, Tom Caputo, Selectmen.
I would also note that we have a, we received an email to Friday from a member of the public, which one, they asked us to read because the person couldn't make it this evening, saying, "Just seeing that John's retiring is such a happy time for him, but big shoes for the next animal control officer to fill. As you share the proclamation with the town of Belmont tonight, I hope you're able to weave in the credit he deserves for keeping residents in Belmont safe from all sorts of wildlife while respecting and caring for these natural inhabitants. John's kept our open spaces safe while dog owners like me enjoy parks and time well spent with community members and their pups. In most towns, animal control is like a four-letter word. Here in Belmont, John's taught us, including our children, so much about the balances between animals and humans. I'm unable to attend this BOS meeting, but I wanted to ensure that you know how much our community appreciated working with John over the years. Aaron Luby." So I wanted to at least read that into the record. Thank you to Aaron. And thank you to you, John.
Thank you. It's truly been an honor working here. It's been the best seventeen years I've had. And I have, you know, two pages of thank yous, but I, from what I understand, I have a couple of interviews, so I'll be able to thank everyone appropriately at that time. But it's been a great run. We made a lot of difference. And it's been a total team effort, and it's been an honor to be a part of it.
I appreciate your service, John. Thank you so much.
You will be missed.
Next on the agenda is vote for approval of the March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen bond financing. This is regarding the high school debt. So introduce yourself.
Floyd Common, Town Treasurer. So tonight, I come before you gentlemen to have you sign off on our bond sale. The bond sale was for a hundred and two million, thirty thousand dollars. Hundred million dollars for the Belmont High School. There was roughly another seven million point four for the police station, DPW facility, and seven hundred thousand for a light project. The actual total sale was a hundred and eight million, but we received some premium dollars. So just to give a little background on it. The bond sale, I'm sorry, the process really started on February twenty fifth when myself and the finance team, which included Patrice Gavine, Chitra Subramanian, John Marshall, I don't want to miss anyone here, Dan Dargan, Anthony DiCagliano from the school department, Glenn Castro, and we had to bring Dave Peddow into it because there were some IT questions. And we spent, I'm going to say, the better part of the twenty fifth of February on ratings calls with S and P and Moody's. Traditionally, we just had one ratings call. That was Moody's, but because of the size of this bond financing of a hundred and eight million, we, they threw S and P into the mix. We were fortunate. We came out, both rating agencies, a triple A in each. For those who like to keep statistics, we're one of nine communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts out of three hundred and fifty-one that have a triple A. So that's a major milestone for the town of Belmont. Now, just to give you a sense of what the numbers were all about. As I said, the total offering was a hundred and eight million, one hundred thousand. Hundred million for the high school, seven million four for the police station, seven hundred thousand for the water department. What we ultimately are going to finance is a hundred and two million, thirty thousand. The difference being six million, seventy thousand dollars that we received in premium money. So the Belmont taxpayer for the high school isn't going to finance a hundred million. They're going to finance ninety-four million, four twenty-eight. I don't want to give a precise number for the benefit of the viewing audience as far as the benefit from the taxpayer because I'm working with Dan Dargan in the assessors office, but I can tell you, this is probably going to save, this five million dollars translates into a savings of about fifty, sixty dollars a year.
Per household.
The average of water.
Per household.
Yeah.
So, but when we, when I get a final number, I'll certainly get it out to everyone. The premium, the premium dollar is very important. We got five million, five hundred and seventy-two million for the school. That saved roughly a million, two in the operating budget. Million, two.
It's important for people to realize the impact of the triple A bond rating on.
Absolutely.
Life around here.
The police station, seven million, four. It's going to cost taxpayers six million, nine eighty-eight. We got four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We're estimating four forty, four hundred and forty thousand for the debt service. It's coming in at three ninety-three, three ninety-four.
Which is great.
Okay. And the water was seven hundred thousand. This is a water bond, just for the viewing audience. We got a thirty-year plan. This started way back when, when Peter Castaneda was heading up the DPW. We're now in year, I think either nineteen or twenty of that thirty-year plan. So that's what the seven hundred thousand dollars is part of that water replacement pipes.
Water main replacement.
Water main replacement. So that's kind of the long and short of.
That's great work.
That's probably the best, I think that's the best possible outcome you could have had from the sale of the bonds, so fantastic.
So one, one final comment. So the question always comes up, who bought our bonds? JP Morgan. What was the true interest cost? Thirty-year note, true interest cost? Three point three one percent. A thirty-year note, three point three one percent. Okay. Now, a little of that is luck and a little of that is the.
Your skill? A lot of it.
Not Floyd's skill. Little of that's luck and a little of that is having the double, triple A ratings. As I always point out, when I say the little bit of luck, I should send my good friend, the Fed Chairman, a fruit basket because when he stopped raising those discount rates, it had a major impact in it. So this is the luck part. The timing is everything. So we hit this at the perfect time.
Locked in at that rate for thirty years?
Thirty years. We locked that in, Mark. It's just terrific.
As far as, yeah, I mean, for the taxpayers, it's fantastic.
So let me remind everyone, we'll be doing this same play next year. It'll be dancing with the rating agencies and the finance people. It'll be February, March of two thousand and twenty.
So people understand, this isn't the bonding for the whole project. The bonding is going in in phases.
In stages.
We don't need all the money all at one time.
So to answer those questions, because I get this question all the time, why didn't we go out and borrow two hundred and twelve million all at once? Well, these are general obligation bonds, non-taxable. We need to spend the money in eighteen to twenty-four months. So it's not a case that we can go out and borrow all of this and have it hang around for three or four years. The last thing we want to do is to get ourselves caught in what we call arbitrage. It's, it's the worst thing any community can have, hang it over their head. The other factor is, Bond Council, without exaggeration, reviewed every paragraph, every question. We were supplying them information probably right up to two weeks ago to make sure that this financing was letter-perfect.
And I should note that if you, if you go through the Stannor Empores and the Moody's rating, actual, the detail of it, they praise Belmont for its sound financial fiscal management, which I think is a testament to everybody. A lot of the people in this room here and in the audience tonight on how we got here. So it's, it's a team effort, for sure.
Absolutely.
So will you go for rating, but, I mean, presumably it will continue because of the size next year as well? That you'll go for both Moody's and S and P as well, likely?
I'm going to be very candid about it, Mark. It'll be the same playbook from the standpoint. I will go out, if we only have to deal with Moody's, we'll deal just with Moody's.
Because I know how exhausting the effort it is to try to work with two rating agencies.
That was not.
Send them documents, have conversations, they interview and other financial, you know.
This, this was mandated by the people that are buying our bonds. Yeah, this wasn't, this wasn't something we signed up for.
So JP Morgan asked that we have ratings by both Moody's and.
All seven of the folks that been on our paper.
Interesting.
Wanted dual ratings.
Chair, can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
So Floyd, at some point then, we will, given that there is a meaningful savings to the taxpayer, we will deauthorize at town meetings some of our borrowing. Will we do that this year or?
You will see me, Tom, standing up there in June. Deauthorizing five million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Awesome. That's great.
That's five million dollars less is going to cost the taxpayer to borrow.
Absolutely. That, that is the standard Floyd Common operation.
That's great. That's great.
Wonderful.
To throw out, let me get another commercial in. I'm also going to be deauthorizing a million, six from the Wellington school building project. Because the Wellington school, school building team, they're over, they're, they've done their job. We got a few cleanup items, but that million, six, we're also going to deauthorize. So it's a standard operation to kind of reduce those types of things. I never lose sight. I'm also a taxpayer.
Well, it also keeps our bonding capacity higher.
Yes, absolutely.
I would just, because of the magnitude of what we're going to be voting on tonight, and see if anyone in the public had any comments on this matter. Seeing none, we will close that portion of the hearing. There is a vote that we have to take, Mark, here. I wrote from here.
Yeah, right here, voted to.
From here to here.
All of that.
If you want to read this.
Further voted, all of that?
Think you're going to have to, I'm making you do it because it's one of your last.
Yeah, thanks so much. Appreciate that. But not, not all the, the numbers as well?
I think you have to read the whole thing out of the record.
Floyd, do we have to read all of these into the record?
Yes, you do.
Numbers every year? Every year? I can read every year?
Yes.
Read fast.
Yes. Mark, give me just a minute.
Why are you making you do it?
Can I get you to, Mark, can I get you to sign this one document? This is.
Sure, what's that?
This is the bonding.
You're not getting up, so.
Tom has to sign it.
Tom has to.
All right, so I move, I move that we approve the sale of the hundred and two million, thirty thousand general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand and nineteen bonds of the town dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Parenthetical to the bonds, to JP Morgan Securities LLC at the price of one hundred and eight million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on March fifteenth of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Year twenty twenty, one million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand at five percent. Twenty twenty-one, one million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand at five percent. Year twenty twenty-two, one million, nine seventy-five, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand at five percent. Year twenty twenty-three, two million, seventy thousand at five percent. Year twenty twenty-four, two million, one hundred and seventy thousand at five percent. Year twenty twenty-five, two million, two hundred and eighty thousand at five percent. Year twenty twenty-six, two million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand at five percent. Year twenty twenty-seven, two million, five hundred and five thousand at five percent. Year twenty twenty-eight, at two million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand at five percent. Year twenty twenty-nine, at, for two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand at four percent. Year twenty thirty, two million, eight hundred thousand at four percent. Year twenty thirty-one, two million, nine hundred and ten thousand at four percent. Year twenty thirty-two, three million, thirty thousand at four percent. Year twenty twenty-three, for three million, one hundred and fifty thousand at four percent. Year twenty thirty-four, at three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand at three percent. Year twenty thirty-five, at three million, three hundred and seventy thousand at three percent. Year twenty thirty-six, at three million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand at three percent. Year twenty thirty-seven, at three million, five hundred and eighty thousand at three percent. Year twenty thirty-eight, at three million, six hundred and ninety thousand at three percent. Year twenty thirty-nine, at three million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand at three point one two five percent. Year twenty forty, at three million, for three million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand at three point one two five percent. Year twenty forty-one, for four million, forty thousand at three point two five percent. Year twenty forty-five, for seventeen million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand at four percent. And year twenty forty-nine, for twenty million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand at four percent. Further vote that the board, further move that the board vote that the bonds maturing on March fifteenth, twenty forty-five, and March fifteenth, twenty forty-nine, each a term bond, shall be subjected to mandatory redemption and mature as follows. Term bond due March fifteenth, twenty forty-five, year twenty forty-two, the amount of four million, four hundred and seventy thousand. One hundred and seventy thousand. Year twenty forty-three, the amount of four million, three hundred and forty thousand. Year twenty forty-four, the amount of four million, five hundred and ten thousand in year twenty forty-five, at final maturity, at four million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand. Term bond due March fifteenth, twenty forty-nine, year twenty forty-six, in the amount of four million, eight hundred and eighty thousand. Year twenty forty-seven, in the amount of five million, seventy-five thousand. Year twenty forty-eight, in the amount of five million, two hundred and eighty thousand. Year twenty forty-nine, final maturity at five million, five hundred and ninety, four hundred and ninety thousand. Thank you. Further move that the board vote that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated March fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and a final official statement dated March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. Parenthetical, the official statement, each in each, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further move that the board vote that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further move that the board vote that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen, lowercase c, two dash twelve, in such form as may be approved by Bond Council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further move that the board vote that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the town treasurer and Bond Council deem sufficient or when such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further move that the board vote that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's real.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you so much for your work.
Great work. Thanks. Thank you, Patrice.
Just another follow-up item. So these, these documents are very specific, lots of compliance involved in these documents. In an order to assist the town from the standpoint of making sure that we are very compliant with non-taxable bonds, there's a small group that we have set up. I'm going to call it the Cash Flow Management Group.
Okay.
It's made up of Floyd Common, Chitra Subramanian, Emma Thurston from the building project, Glenn Castro from the town administrator's office, and Shane Nolan from Daedalus. We're going to be meeting once a month on a Thursday. We will be tracking the expenditures, the cash flow, any MSBA reimbursement. So critical piece of this puzzle because, one, we want to make sure we get our eighty million back, and, two, we want to stay in compliance.
All good.
Ends my presentation.
And there is the sound financial management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you so much, Floyd.
All right.
Take care. Have a good night.
Next is vote on policy regarding electioneering during early and absentee voting for all elections. Our town clerk is here this evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk and Member of the Board of Registitors of Voters. As you recall, probably from last October, I proposed to the board, and you accepted October eighteenth, to put in place only during the early voting period before the state election in November, that electioneering, as defined under Chapter fifty-four, Section sixty-five, would not be permitted at Town Hall because we became a voting place during the early voting period. At that time, we suggested that maybe we should look at whether that was successful or are there any problems with that, and consider doing that before each one of our elections for in-person absentee voting, which happens about three weeks or so before every election, and then for the state early voting defined periods. So that's why I'm back.
Super. So this is just to make sure that people basically aren't campaigning in Town Hall during absentee ballot time.
Correct, because it becomes a polling place. Right now, absentee voting, by the way, is underway downstairs for those who qualify.
And this is, and we had it as a pilot program just for the public in the fall, for the fall election with the early voting. We had a pilot program, seemed to work well, so this is to make it permanent.
Correct.
That's what this is about.
And it's not the hundred and fifty, this is not a hundred and fifty-foot limit.
Yes.
It is. This is the hundred and fifty.
So they could stand a hundred and fifty feet away.
Absolutely.
As people walk in to do early voting and absentee?
Yes. And we, before every election, we mark, we have our surveyors or folks over in the engineers' office.
Not only during Election Day, but also during early voting.
That's correct.
That's the difference, is that this would go during early voting and absentee voting as opposed to just Election Day in and of itself, because this is technically a polling station during that time.
And it is applicable at this point only at Town Hall because those, that is the only place that we do early voting and in-person absentee at this point.
And this vote would cover all future elections?
That's correct.
Oh, this makes it permanent.
Yeah, because we'd done it as a pilot program.
Okay, sure.
Any members of the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close that portion.
Can I ask just one, one question for clarification?
So right now, we're only doing it for absentee voting for town elections. Will we do early voting for other elections going forward, or how will that, how will that work?
So early voting is only allowed during state elections.
Only during state.
By the law, yes, under Chapter fifty-four. So there is definitely discussion about expanding it to primaries, but there's no discussion about allowing, basically no excuse absentee voting before local elections. The privilege is not extended.
Doesn't this say early voting, though?
It does. This is, this is applicable, this policy is applicable for all early voting periods as defined by the legislature, which is only available at state elections at this point, as well as in-person absentee. And that covers all elections.
Oh, Tom, you're indicating in terms of federal.
Right. Well, I was asking whether early voting would be applied to town elections, and it sounds like that's not permitted.
But these new, this new restriction applies to all elections.
Agreed.
That's why it references that, because some will be early voting and some will not.
Some will not.
That's correct.
Got it.
Okay. Want to read it?
Sure.
Wow. Yeah, all right. He's not getting off tonight.
Making him run the gauntlet.
Oh, yeah.
Seriously, it's like hazing.
Got one more meeting, Ellen.
I know. Wait till the last one.
The taskmaster.
Just wait.
Now, we're going to be nice to him the last one.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. Town of Belmont, Mass. Board of Selectmen, policy regarding electioneering during early and absentee voting for all elections. Whereas Chapter fifty-four, Section sixty-five of the general laws of Massachusetts prohibits electioneering, parenthetical, of the display or distribution of material intended to influence the actions of voters, close parenthetical, at or within a hundred feet of the entrance of polling, hundred and fifty feet, excuse me, of the entrance of polling places at an election of federal, state, or local officers. Whereas an increasing percentage of Belmont voters are taking advantage of their right and opportunity to vote in person by absentee ballot or during the early voting period established by the legislature and come to the town offices at four fifty-five Concord Avenue in order to obtain absentee ballots or cast early ballots. Whereas such voters should be given the same right and opportunity to cast or obtain ballots free of electioneering activity as is enjoyed by voters who cast their vote on the day of the election. Whereas observance of the hundred and fifty-foot rule established by Chapter fifty-four, Section sixty-five, that the town offices during in-person absentee voting or the early voting period would not unduly restrict the ability of any person to display or distribute campaign messages to prospective voters approaching the town offices. And whereas the Board of Selectmen has the care, custody, and control of the town offices at four fifty-five Concord Avenue and the surrounding sidewalks and may regulate activity thereon. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen adopts the following regulation for the period designated for in-person absentee voting in the state's early voting period. No poster, card, handbill, placard, picture, or circular intended to influence the action of the voter other than those expressly authorized by generalized Chapter fifty-four, Section sixty-five, shall be posted, exhibited, circulated, or distributed in the town clerk's office in the building where the town clerk's office is located, on the walls thereof, on the premises on which the town offices at four fifty-five Concord Avenue stand, or within one hundred and fifty feet of the building entrance door to said town offices, given under our hands this eighteenth day of March two thousand and nineteen. Board of Selectmen, Adam Dash, Chair, Marquee Palillo, Vice Chair, Thomas Caputo, Selectmen. I move approval of the Board adopting the policy regarding electioneering during early and absentee voting for all elections.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
You're welcome, Ellen. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this forward.
No problem. Hope they go easy on you, Mark.
Not happening.
No, it's fine. I'm just serving with them, believe me.
Discussion of the succession of police chief.
Okay. It should take a couple, it should only take a couple of minutes, right?
Yeah. So I had, as the Board knows, the police chief, Richie McGothin, is retiring as of December thirty-first of this year. So before the year gets ahead of us, we wanted to present possible outline to the Board as to how to move forward with a police chief search. So I had just drafted a quick memo in regards to some things we were thinking about that the Board could consider. One of the things in the memo provided is the option of having an internal search versus an external search. As the Board is aware, you have recently done external searches for my position, Chris Floyd's position. Is that it? Is there any other ones?
We did, we did for the town accountant early on when I was on.
And you did with the assistant, well, there wasn't one, yeah.
So what.
We've done several.
We did do the town accountant back in twenty-ten or eleven.
So there's a, there's a consistency with external searches. So we did that. We also proposed a timeline and a search committee. Regardless of whether or not it's internal or external, a search committee would have to be put together. A timeline would have to be put together. We're hoping to have somebody in place by November, so there'll be a nice transition with the chief leaving. So I guess we're looking for the direction in regards to how you want to kind of proceed with, with the police chief search.
Yeah. I mean, there's, we've, as you said, with the other positions that report to us, we've used, we've done an outside search. Internal candidates have applied. It's kind of, you know, there's a plus and minus. On the one hand, you don't want to discourage people who are internal about moving up. On the other hand, you don't really know what's out there until you start looking. And we've actually made several hires from outside, going into the process, not even sure that would happen, but getting blown away by the candidates that we received. So it's sort of, doesn't, going outside doesn't preclude internal people from. So it's sort of, doesn't, going outside doesn't preclude internal people from applying.
Correct.
Obviously, and they may end up being the only finalists. The other part of it's hiring a consultant to do the, do the process, which we've done with the, the General Manager and with the Town Administrator, where we hired Gru White to do those processes. But I believe for, for this position, this is going to be more like with the Town Administrator, where we have to go out and actually do an RFP for the search company.
If you would like to go that route, yes.
And then we would have to do an RFP for the actual job, so, so I remember, that's why it took so long for the Town Administrator to hire us, we had to do two. Or I remember the first RFP for the search company had to go out again, because there weren't, there weren't, it was only like one applicant or something, and then we had to, we had to, or no applicants, we had to change the wording of the RFP for the search company, and then we.
Understanding.
It was this, that's why we're starting it so soon, because this takes longer.
So if you did choose the internal route, I think it would be, a search committee would be put in place.
It would still be quicker. If you did the internal route, it would be quicker.
Could you sell a consultant, though, for the internal route?
I don't think, I, I wouldn't, I mean.
Why wouldn't you want a search? Why wouldn't you want?
Money?
Yeah.
Well, I, I understand that point, but, 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 you know, if you want my thoughts, and I think I have to.
I do want your thoughts, Mark.
So, so I, I would, I would favor sort of a two-step approach, because I think there are a number of men and women, police officers, within our current department that serve us well, that have an interest, don't want to discourage them from applying, and I wonder if we go external, whether that would. So that, have you concerned about that?
We hope it wouldn't.
Well, I know that, but sometimes people are sort of hesitant if we're doing a national search, and, because, you know, you're likely going to find a lot of very qualified candidates. And if we established through the search consultant, or perhaps with you, Jessica, the requirements or the level of expertise and experience that we're looking for and what the requirements are, and you can even have an assessment center as part of that, and if you're not satisfied with the results of that, then you'd go external. I'm just suggesting that as a possibility.
It would just take longer, I think.
No, I know that.
Yeah, but it's definitely.
It's definitely doable, given the timeframe, where we are.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think, I think you would have, you know, folks that, that currently are there that would apply, even if you were to go external right off the bat. I just worry that if you did that, would you discourage internal candidates from not moving forward?
Jessica Porter, Human Resources Director, I, I don't think that that would discourage internal candidates. Typically, what happens is, a lot of times, when you do the wider search, if anything, you might discourage external candidates when they know that there's several, you know, one or more internal candidates that are very strong. So that's usually the way that goes. I've never personally seen an instance where it would discourage the internal candidates.
Well, as we've had with both of ours, the Town Administrator and the General Manager of Belmont Light Search, it did not discourage internal candidates, nor did, nor did the internal candidate's presence discourage the external candidates. We ended up with a very large group of applicants for both. And we ended up choosing outside people, and honestly, at some point, I wasn't quite sure that was ever going to happen.
It's just my thought, you know, I, I prefer, and I think I have to recuse myself on this, if in fact, you're suggesting I should be part of the search committee.
Well, see, I was on the search committee for General Manager.
All right, well, then, you know, I do what I want to do, but, 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 you know, I might want to two-step it, although I, I do, I do understand your concern about the way, it's March.
In the summer, in the summer, we lose a lot.
Took us like a good, almost a year.
Yeah.
Took us eleven months to get the Town Administrator in, so, by going outside, so there is that. I mean, you were going to say something?
Well, I guess, my question on the consultant, I think we've got some great internal candidates, and I'm intrigued by the idea of a two-step process, but I, I guess I do wonder, if we were to bring the consultant on, are there different rates depending upon how long we engage them, how many steps in the process? Is there a cost savings to be had, or at the end of the day, is it a wash from a cost perspective?
Yeah, we'd have to put it up, and the RFP would have to outline the process if it were to be two steps. So, yeah, it would probably cost a little bit more.
You'd have to do an RFP for the search company.
But you could almost do the RFP as a two-step, you know.
Right, it could probably be at least one RFP.
So bring, bring them on, recognizing it may be a two-step with two different, two different payments, depending upon what services are asked.
It was very helpful having Gru White in the other processes, because, you know, we're elected officials, we're not human resources experts.
Right.
And it was very helpful to have some external people who had, who had knowledge of other towns, who worked with other towns, and have done searches for something like a Police Chief. I know that Gru White had done Police Chief searches in other towns, and they knew people that they, and some of the candidates came in because Gru White called and said, hey, there's a job opening in Belmont, and I know you're looking, and so they applied. We would never have known that without Gru White doing that.
So they can help us source candidates. I guess the other thought that I had is if we were to initiate a two-step process, does the consultant help us understand what the market is, what's available out there, and help us look at our internal candidates versus that market, and maybe give us some guidance as to whether or not we intend to open it up?
Yes.
So I guess I'm saying that it, you know, regardless of what we do, I would think the consultant could be, you know, money well spent to help us ensure.
It wasn't huge money, to be fair. I mean, Gru White actually was the, was the cheapest of the ones who applied.
Are there consultants that specialize in Police Chief, do you know?
Yes, yes, I mean, I know, Gru White does them, there's a company called Badge Quest that is out there that does a lot of searches.
Municipal resources.
Yeah, it's kind of the usual suspects.
I wonder whether we would do that, and sort of hire the consultant and say, get a sense of who are the internal applicants, and then the consultant can say, well, there may be others out here that.
So we'd have to write the RFP.
You could hire the consultant and ask them that question, I guess, but it's our decision.
Yeah, I, you know, to Tom's point, I mean, you know, if we look at our internal applicants, I mean, and say, well, who, who else would, and I guess you don't know until you sort of go external, but, you know, what would, what would we not be getting by just going internal? I guess that would, the way I would phrase it. It'd be helpful to understand that and then make a final decision on that.
I mean, Police Chief is kind of a unique job, where knowing the community is very important, so it's kind of.
That's the point.
It's a different thing than being General Manager of Belmont Light, so it's a, it is a different deal. I get that.
I think that's the point, someone that, you know, and we have a lot of talented police officers, and some that will be interested in this job, knowing the community, knowing the people here, working with the department, I think would be important, but we also want to ensure we hire the best qualified candidate.
It's, it's an important job.
That's not the only criteria for me.
And that's why I'm, I'm wondering if the consultant then helps us, helps, working with that search committee, determine, based upon an assessment of the internal candidates, are we comfortable that we have someone who is meeting the, the objectives, or do we feel the need to open it up?
Yeah, could do that.
So we're writing in our.
I mean, you, both of you could establish, I mean, you know, my last meeting is in the first, you know, whoever might sit here, what are your requirements, you know, for Police Chief, and then see if the internal applicants match that, if not, then immediately go to external. I, I mean, I don't know, just.
That's why.
I don't know whether, I'm just trying, trying to think about this, you know.
I don't even know what to write.
So as not to sort of slow the process down.
I hear you, but I mean, it's, we have, I think we have a ser, a serious amount.
What are your thoughts?
I think Jess and I can maybe try and craft an RFP and bring it to the next meeting and see what you guys think.
What's your point of view on this?
Internal versus external, I think.
You haven't gone through the external, and we were fortunate to hire you.
I, I think, I think there are a lot of excellent candidates.
You're putting her on the spot, though.
No, I think there are a lot of excellent internal candidates, and I would hate to discourage them from applying.
That's my question and point, I mean, there, there, there's probably some that will do it no matter what, and others that might say, geez, I'm a little scaredish because of the fact that you're not going external. And I, I'd rather see who's there first on an internal.
Well, the other thing is, you know, having conversations with the Police Chief, he's done a lot of work since he's been here to succession plan, and I would hate to lose that work that he has done.
I'd like to do, I mean, I would recommend doing that first, but, but have a short sort of fuse on that, so not to sort of delay the process, because however we want to slice this, our esteemed Police Chief is gone December thirty-first.
We can, we can put some.
Not a day later.
We can put some hard deadlines in the RFP that we want, you know, decision made by X amount of time, so it doesn't go too far.
An RFP for a search company to do that, um, yeah. And also, just talk about the search committee briefly, that the idea of the search committee consisting of, and this is something I talked about last time, when we were doing for the General, for not, not having one of us on the search committee, because we are the ultimate hire, hiring folks, and I thought it was a little, I wasn't really keen on having a sitting selectman on the search committee to vet it. However, I ended up getting tabbed to be on the search committee for the General Manager of Belmont Light, and Jim Williams was on the search committee for Town Administrator. I wasn't terribly thrilled with that process, but I like the fact that putting Mark on here, because he's recent, and he's going to be like a kind of selectman, but not longer a selectman, is actually kind of threads that needle perfectly.
Haven't quite cooled off yet.
Well, and the law enforcement background in your family, I think you've got a unique perspective on this.
I'm, I'd be honored to serve, Adam, at your pleasure.
I think that would be great, and then Superintendent John Phelan, a representative from Belmont Schools, like a principal, two citizens from Belmont, people could apply will put out a request, a representative from Council on Aging, president or a member of a PTO, and a current Police Chief in Massachusetts, not in Belmont.
And that can be retired Police Chief, too.
Yeah, and we did, and we, yeah, we did that with the General Manager of Belmont Light, where we had General Manager from Concord on the committee to give us an outside perspective, which was great, and then we ended up poaching his second in command. It had nothing to do with it, so, but the, one thing to keep in mind in the search committee is you have three folks from the school world out of nine.
I think it's a great, I thought, and Patrice.
And I'm sorry, and Patrice.
I thought it was a great, I, I mean, not withstanding myself, of course, I thought, I thought it was, you know, a well-thought-out, you know, search committee.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Did you get representation and input from?
Yeah, and then the Police Chief works very closely with the schools, and we felt like.
I think it's critical, and I know this Chief has done, you know, has great relationships with the schools as well as the Police Department, and I think, see, I love the fact, thank you for having someone from COA on it as well.
And this was also this outside Police Chief, this is what Gru White helped us with General Manager from Belmont Light, Gru White's the one who went out and found us a General Manager from a different Light Department to put on the committee.
Yes.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on it.
Yeah, we both do.
We already know Police Chiefs that we want to put on.
Fine.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
So, so one other, one other note there, I, I think it would be great if John Phelan, Superintendent, is able to participate. Do we want to say John Phelan or his designee?
I talked to John, he wants to be on.
He's up for it.
Yeah, you know, Tom, I was actually going to say that, because, you know, I think, I don't know whether, I don't think he's served on the financial task force, but we're, we're sort of sensitive to the fact that he's trying to get a high school off the ground and.
He is serving on the financial task force, too, though, which is great, he's finding time for that.
Well, I'd love to, I think John's great, and I'd love to serve with him, so.
It's a, the interaction between the police and the schools is a huge deal.
John, we're going to meet every morning at seven AM, I just let him know that.
Obviously, I'm opening this matter for members of the public who wish to speak. We're talking about the process and the search committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Tom, for, thank you for, thank you for.
You can come up to the table, Chief.
I, I look forward to serving.
I had to find you something to do.
Just identify yourself.
Good evening, Mitch Plaugh, Police Chief. I just want to thank the Board and obviously Jess and Patrice for giving me the opportunity. I just want to give you a little history from where I stand on this matter. Back when I was appointed in two thousand and seven, the Board at the time was very direct in the sense of what they gave me as far as marching orders, I would say. They made it quite clear that they wanted some type of succession planning in place and to move the department ahead. For those that you know, Assistant Chief Richard Lane was very accommodating and very busy in my first five years, he stayed on and we worked together. At the time, in the first year that I was made the Chief, I had the opportunity to promote three lieutenants, a captain, and three sergeants within the first year, and move again the department forward. I've taken that part of my job very seriously, and given the opportunity and to find people in the department, I think it's important that we continue that. In two thousand and twelve, Assistant Chief Lane informed me he was retiring. At that point in time, I looked internally to see what we had for people, interviewed three people in the department, and I chose Assistant Chief Jamie McGeisak at the time, who was a lieutenant, so that, in the idea that we could continue the process that we had been working together as a team to move the department forward. I just want to keep that in mind and have, I know the decision is yours, but I think it's important that you keep that piece in mind so that we can continue the progress that has been made, I truly believe, as within the team and the department itself. But we got a lot of things going on, as you know, we got the renovation project coming up, and we have a lot of other things going on as well. But I would just think and hope that you keep and consider those pieces of the puzzle, and I know that's a very important piece. I, I, I don't want to, this, as far as the position of Police Chief, you mentioned it, Mr. Dash, it's a very important piece to our community, and I, I don't want to lose sight of that. I've been very fortunate in my piece of being appointed as the Police Chief, and I want to thank the town and the community, but I think, again, moving forward, I think we should keep a lot of those things in mind. And I know Jess had mentioned it in the, in the memo about the morale, upward movement, all those things you want to consider, because I, I got to tell you honestly, as you've mentioned, each one of you, we got a lot of good people over there.
How many female officers do we have now, Chief?
We have seven female officers out of forty, forty-eight budgeted positions at this point in time, but we, we're.
Appreciate the effort you made there as well.
We got, we, we have very, a very good department, I got to tell you honestly, I'm very proud of the men and women of the department, and they do a great job for our, our community. But I, I just want, I don't want to lose sight of that, and I just want to keep on moving forward, so I.
That, that I can promise you we will do, but I mean, the, I, I don't, I hope that whatever we decide to do, that, that the, the internal candidates don't get discouraged, because that's not the intent.
Well, I, well, I hope, I hope they don't either, but I, I think, too, to your point, and I know Mark had mentioned it as well, that sometimes it can have that impact, in effect. And I know that you mentioned about going outside for the Town Administrator's position and for the Belmont Light manager's position. It's, I think this is a little different, the Police Chief for your community is a little different, and as I said, I mean, you look at somebody that has, you know, been very involved in the community, has the knowledge of the community, and that's what we need to make sure continues and moves forward.
No, and I agree with you, I said that very, that very thing earlier, I understand it's different, I'm just putting out the perspective.
Do you expect a number of internal candidates applying?
I, I believe we will have.
Good.
I believe we will have.
Good.
But I just wanted to mention that, I thank you for considering it, and like I said, we've done a lot of work into getting the department where it is today.
You have, Chief.
And I hope, I hope we continue that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this matter? Yes, please identify yourself at the record and come to the microphone.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, thank you for your opportunity to speak.
opportunity to speak. My name is Todd Benedetti. I'm a resident of Belmont. I've been a Belmont Police Officer for over fifteen years. I'm here representing the members of the Belmont Police Department. I've had the opportunity to work with several chiefs over the years and realize how important it is to hire from within the ranks of the Belmont Police. When I heard there would be a discussion about the chief's process and the possibility of the town spending the upwards of $25,000 on a consultant for a nationwide search, I had to voice my opinion as a town resident and officer of the Belmont Police. This same issue was discussed by the selectmen and the police unions in 2005, and agreement was reached to always look from within first. If unsuccessful, hiring from the outside can be risky and costly. It could cause this department to become a revolving door and offices and supervisors would have to undergo a change in strategy every three years. The Belmont Police Officers, Supervisors, and Residents are watching this meeting and are very concerned with the possibility of the town spending thousands of dollars on an outside search when they are viable candidates inside the department. Why not interview these candidates first, then go to the outside if necessary? We have candidates within our own ranks that have accepted chief's jobs in the past and were finalists for others in neighboring communities. The trend to hire from within is overwhelming. Watertown, Lexington, Waltham, and Arlington all have hired or will hire from within. Most communities are staying with internal viable candidates. The candidates that we have in Belmont are highly qualified and have similar or better resumes than most recent chief appointments from other communities. Why is there a need to validate this with a nationwide search? We are currently involved in a renovation project that will take a few years, and we feel this is not the time to bring in an outside person. It would take several years for an outside chief to come in and get used to the department, personnel, and town itself. With this renovation going on, this would add more responsibilities and create undue stress and stability issues within our department. There are several current Belmont officers who already have options to move to other departments. By going through a wasteful outside search, the morale in this department will suffer and people will leave. I have seen this before. We had morale issues in the past and lost 25% of our sworn officers. It came to a total of twelve officers in our department that transferred out of Belmont over a short period of time. The numeric cost to the town was hundreds of thousands of dollars, but the quality of the offices and what they had to offer is immeasurable. I would like to summarize within a few points. We already have candidates within the department to take the chief's job and immediately take this department to the next level. The candidates we have are going to have a vested interest in improving the quality of life for the town's community members and a genuine concern for the office's well-being. Our officers believe in our internal candidates and believe it would allow for an easy transition through these tough times. An outside candidate could take years, if ever, to get to know the community, police personnel, and make relationships with other town departments. This will be even harder during our renovation as there is limited space and areas for the community to engage with the new chief. The trend to hire police officers from within is happening for a reason. These towns realize the ease of transitioning with an internal candidate and stability within a police department is important. Searching outside would negatively impact the morale of the entire department, the candidates, and undermine the relationship you will need to have a productive, healthy police department. The outside candidate, if chosen, would have to be substantially better than the internal Belmont candidates. The Belmont candidates have been to the FBI National Academy, which is only offered to less than 1% of police officers nationwide. In addition, they have over twenty years of leadership experience in Belmont. This is an easy decision to at least interview the internal candidates before an outside search is conducted. I and other officers want to know that internal candidates will be highly considered. This decision affects every officer because of possible future promotions and how the selectmen perceive our current leaders. Save the thousands of dollars invested in a search and invest that money in a project that the town could truly benefit from. We have a great police department with qualified and talented leaders. I am confident as an employee and resident that all candidates are ready and willing to take the leadership role and help guide the Belmont Police into the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I should note that whether it's internal, external, I think we're going to be spending the money in the consultant either way, but that's, but your point's well taken. Yes?
So, Susan Burgess Cox, the Chair of the School Committee. I didn't hear the whole conversation. I'd go out in the hallway, but I did hear about the Tom suggestion of the superintendent and/or his designee. I would like to give him that flexibility. I know Ms. Garvin said that she spoke to him, but I still would like to be able to give him that flexibility, so.
We can do that. I mean, I think that makes sense.
Not here, so.
He's pretty busy.
Yes.
But it would be his choice then, so he would do it or he wouldn't.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Quite well taken, sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Fine with that.
Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, just a nomenclature clarification. I think you mean a screening committee, not a search term, a search committee, because that entitles you to make the decision in the end.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do remember that distinction from last time.
Yep, agreed.
Hello, gentlemen. Ms. Garvin, my name is Ben Malott. I'm representing the Belmont Police Superior Officers Association tonight. I think Mr. Benedetti did an outstanding job, as well as the chief, outlining our concerns. And the only thing I'd like to add is Belmont prides itself on education. We're a community that has a lot of highly educated individuals that live in our community that seek professional development. Under the chief's guidance, we have had the opportunity to attend numerous professional development sessions, including professional development seminars at Endicott and with the FBI. Out of the people you're likely looking from our internal candidates, we have seven. Five lieutenants, the captain, and the assistant chief, all of which have master's degrees in criminal justice, and two of which have completed the distinguished FBI National Academy. I honestly don't believe you're going to find any finer leaders than the ones we already have in our department, and I thank you for your consideration in this manner.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Thomasine Olson, Precinct Five. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I really have to echo what Officer Benedetti, Benedetti. And, and Ben just said, I don't understand why you would have to spend any additional money for any additional, because we've got so much to pay anyways. But looking at the talent pool that exists in the Belmont Police Department, I really don't think you can find better. Not to mention, they know people. I think it's very important that Chief McLaughlin has been very accessible to all of us, and I think having someone local who we already know is going to make it a big difference. So I really hope you stay with the internal candidates. I just think you'd do us all a better service.
Thank you. Anybody else? Close that portion of the meeting. What I was thinking was create the screening committee tonight. I was thinking I could do the consultant or not do the consultant, but interview the internal candidates and then see if we wanted to go outside at that point.
I think we need a consultant either way.
The beauty of the consultant is that that person could give us a third-party analysis as to whether the internal candidates, whether they are, what he sees, he or she sees in other communities, and if he says, you're not going to do any better, then we know for sure.
Yes.
And if he says, you know, I got someone who's a superstar you got to talk to, we can make that, what, the screening committee, not us, the screening committee can make that decision at that time.
Okay, yes, I'd like to.
And I should note that the money, when we did this for the town administrator and for the, for Belmont Light was actually relatively small.
And I, and I would encourage us, as we discussed before, to have it be a two-step process. So run an RFP where if they're just helping us with internal vetting, it might be less than if we initiate a broader search.
I think it's such an important position, it's, you know, I know it's money that we need to spend, but I think it's important money. I think it's an important position we should spend.
It was something like 15,000 last time. It was, or even.
So do you want, Mr. Chair, do you want, you want free motions here?
The motion, first, I think we have a motion to create the screening committee along those lines that are outlined in.
I move that we create, can I, can I vote on this if I'm part of that?
Maybe you shouldn't vote on that part because we're going to put you on that.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, I'll move that we create a screening committee to support the search for a new Belmont Chief of Police as outlined previously. Join, read through all of them, if you could.
With the change, with the change on Mr. Phelan.
All right, I will read through it then. Creating a screening committee with, including Mark Palillo, Superintendent John Phelan or designee, representative from the Belmont Schools, possibly a principal, two citizens of Belmont, for which that we will have an application process, a representative of the Council on Aging, the president or member of the PTO, a current police chief, or I think current or former police chief in Massachusetts, and Patrice Garvin, our town administrator.
So there would be nine members.
Nine members in total.
All right. Second, in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a screening committee. Next would be to, I guess, to, Mark, now you can come back on, right?
Okay, so I move that we, we hire a consultant to.
I think we have to drag, to request the town administrator and staff to create an RFP for a consultant.
I move that we request that the town administrator and Director of Human Resources, Jessica Porter, to craft an RFP to hire a consultant as part of this screening process.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I would, and I would say that, did you want to say anything about doing it as a two-part?
Yeah, so then I, I move that we approve a two-step process in regards to the identification of the new Police Chief. That, that two-step process would include an initial review of internal candidates in conjunction with input from the consultant.
And the screening committee, obviously.
And the screening committee, and this phase two, second step, would be to the extent that those internal candidates don't meet the expectations of the screening committee and consultant, that we would look to external candidates.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is the process. We have till December 31st. Good luck.
Jessica, nice, I think, really nice job on this. I appreciate that. Thank you for outlining this.
I should note the next item, which is discussion and vote for change of liquor license spice corner LLC, is not going forward this evening. That is off the agenda. I don't know if anybody's here for that, but we are not taking that up tonight, which puts us still way behind schedule. Nevertheless, we're going to soldier on. Vote to accept donations to the Recreation Department. A, $7,000 to additional funds for defibrillators for fields. B, $750 to offset expenses for the Special Olympic program.
Good job.
Good evening. Identify yourselves for the record, please.
Thank you, members of the board. John Marshall, Assistant Town Administrator.
June Howell, Recreation Department.
June and the department have been working on this for a while, so I'm going to turn it over to June to talk about the donations that you'll be accepting tonight. And just a very, very brief update of where we are with the defibrillator project.
I'll be very quick. As you know, the Recreation Department, in cooperation with the Fire Department, have, have begun this project to place defibrillators on all of the town's athletic fields and parks. We have received several donations, so work is ready to begin in the spring for, to start putting on the fields. The storage boxes have arrived. If you'd like to see them, they're in the office, so.
Every field, June? They're going to be in every field?
I mean the towns' fields, so PQ, Town Field, Windbrook.
We voted this.
We voted, I know, yeah, just curious.
Town Field, Windbrook, PQ, Pace and Park. So five fields to begin. See what happens later.
Is there one on the high school fields?
There is not one on the high school field, but right now, we, the town doesn't, that's right. But right now, the coaches carry defibrillators with them, so maybe somewhere down the road.
And so we previously voted to install the defibrillators. This is to accept donations to offset those expenses.
Yes.
And we are very, you want to tell us who's donating the money?
Yes, I'd love to. We have received donations, and hopefully you'll see my face more as more donations come in.
I hope so.
I'm very, very grateful.
That would be a great reason to see your face, June.
Thank you. So the Watertown Savings Bank Charitable Foundation, the Belmont Boosters Club, Belmont Youth Baseball, the Brendan Grant Foundation, the Friends of Belmont Sport, and hopefully I'll get this name right, a memorial donation from the family of Thomas Theodarakis.
Excellent.
So.
And that's the $7,000 total.
That is the total, that's right.
So for that money, can we get a motion?
So a move that we accept a very generous donation as stated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now the second.
Defibrillator costs, and can I just ask quickly?
Each defibrillator cost, well, let's see, just six, just over $1,000 for each defibrillator.
Just buy seven.
Then there's the boxes.
And the boxes.
Oh, so this doesn't quite get us to seven, but, yeah, okay, great.
Oh, yeah, no.
And then, yeah, but.
We, we have, we have raised enough funds to buy all of the equipment. What we're, what we're working on now is, is the electrical installation, so.
So if you want to talk to us about the $750, who's donated that?
This is a donation to our, to our Recreation Department Belmont Sport Program, which is our special needs program and Special Olympics program. So the Murphy family and the Bay State Federal Savings Charitable Foundation has donated money to offset costs for Special Olympic events.
That's $750 total. The motion to accept that money?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, June.
Possible vote to support resolution calling for funding of the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations in 2019. I believe, uh, School Committee Chair Susan Burgess Cox is here for this item. Uh, and who, I'm sorry, Kate, want to come on up? Sure. Anyone else here on this matter? Bring them on down.
Hello, Sue.
How are you?
I'm well.
Good evening.
Hey, Kate.
So, will you tell us what this is about?
So, back in 2015, there was the Foundation Budget Review Commission report that was passed and recommending legislation to modify and enhance the budget, Chapter 70, funding for schools, and they discovered a number of areas that they needed the funding, but that three out of the group have a specific impact on Belmont, special education, health insurance, and ELL. So back in 2016, the School Committee, as Selectmen caputo remembers, did a resolution supporting this commission's recommendations. There was legislation during that period that fell through or didn't get put forward, and so there's now new legislation and a new hearing that's going to be held this Friday to review a number of acts that are proposed. And so the School Committee, at the recommendation of the Belmont Education Association and Ms. Bowen, put forward a new resolution to have as part of the hearing record for Friday, and we are asking that the Selectmen also have a resolution as well.
Has the School Committee voted on this?
The School Committee, yes, unanimously recommended the, voted in favor of the resolution.
Sounds, sounds like. I've read the report. I completely agree that, you know, even though we continue to get increases in Chapter 78, that it isn't nearly at the level that the, but the Foundation Budget Review Commission had recommended based on the increasing costs as you outlined here.
Yep, absolutely.
So I know that the state legislatures want to do more, and the governor has done more, but not clearly at the level. And I forget who, there was representative that, I think someone told us that, right? Who introduced this legislation?
There, there are a number of pieces, yeah. So Senator Chang Diaz has one. There's also another, there, the governor proposed a bill. There are four major bills, and then there's.
I'm sure both of our state legislatures, Senator Brownsberger.
And others that are modifying different portions.
The system's, system's a bit broken, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, Senator Brownsberger and I know, and Representative Rogers' vote, having discussed with them a number of times, support, you know, moving closer to what the commission had recommended.
And so our resolution is a very general resolution because of the number of different pieces of legislation that are going to be discussed at this hearing.
Doesn't target a specific number.
It doesn't target a specific bill.
So, Mr. Chair, is this a vote for us to then have a similar resolution? Okay, so I move that the Board of Selectmen.
You can just say the same as this.
Vote to support the resolution calling for funding of the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations in 2019.
That, as adopted by the School Committee.
As adopted by the School Committee.
So I have one for the three of you to sign as well, if you wanted to.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have anything to add to this, Kate?
Thanks for joining us, Kate.
Well, thank you for getting this, did you start, we started the process?
Well, good luck with this. Could you keep us informed on this? Will you, obviously, the School Committee and others will keep us informed.
Yes, we will keep you informed, yes.
Good luck with this.
Where these bills go.
Yes.
We've been talking about this for years. It's good to see there's some momentum this time in the state.
It doesn't get to the level of what the Foundation Budget Review Commission had recommended. It does put pressure on the state legislature and the governor to increase Chapter 70 funding, even more than it has.
I mean, the four major bills all have different ways of looking at all these areas and different funding formulas and so.
And the hearing's Friday? The Senate hearing, House?
Yes, it's a joint hearing.
Joint hearing?
Yes.
Good luck.
So.
Thank you.
Our wishes will be with you. Let us know how it turns out.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you. All right. Review Community Preservation Committee proposals. So I've already done this once with the Warren Committees. We're going to do it again for us. So this is, these are the proposals, all eight of them, right, eight, that are going forward to town meeting for CPA projects, and I guess we'll just take them in order. Belmont Police Station, who's here for that one?
Oh, I was just going to say Anthony Ferrante. Here he is.
His name is on it, but.
Michael.
Right, so Michael, and I'm, or, and other, other folks are here, so.
Lauren Meyer.
So, obviously, in the interest of time and the fact that we've kind of, I know Tom's on the CPC.
I'm on the CPC, exactly.
I would do this with the Warren Committee. So really, it's an audience.
And I'm leaving, so it doesn't matter.
Mark's leaving, so, so let's, let's just move it along.
Let's just move it all over.
Hopefully he'll tell me, remember, and I can vote then, but yeah, go ahead.
So why don't you explain to us the amount of the money and what it's for, for this particular project?
Michael Smith, from the historic district commission and also the.
Michael, your mic is off. Michael, your mic, mic's off.
Turn your microphone on, please.
There's a button up front.
Press hard, and it turns to green.
I may be able to help.
All right, start over.
Sure. Michael Smith from the historic district commission and also from the DPW Police Station Building Committee. So we've submitted a final application in the amount of $788,000 for the complete restoration of the exterior of the existing historic police station. So that work was done and reviewed by a member of the CPC, Lisa Harrington, who is also a historic preservation specialist, and she and I reviewed the documents recently and then the few questions that we had resolved with the architect. The current estimate is at $788,000, which is what we applied for, and we're getting ready to go out to bid here in next month.
That's a very good concise explanation of it, Michael. Thank you.
Do you want to ask a question? Oh, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead.
Brevity is the soul of it.
You know, the $7.4 million reconstruction of this police station, and does it in any way conflict with that, Michael?
No, no, as you know, as you know, we're do, I beg your pardon?
Is it part of sort of the hope that, I mean, yeah, I'm sorry, please explain.
As you know, we're doing a major addition to the existing police station to keep the police department in operation for the next 50 years.
So this doesn't impact the exterior?
It does.
It does.
No, the, the $7.4 million bill doesn't impact, other than the addition, the exterior.
That's right. That's for the interior of the building and the addition of the building.
This is for restoration of the historic facade of the existing building.
This is only for the historic restoration of the facade.
Which is in some, somewhat disrepair.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, so all the masonry will be cleaned, repointed, new windows, doors, everything, yeah.
Anthony Ferrante, the applicant and vice chair of the Building Committee. Just to be clear, the exterior of the police station was never part of the original plan presented at town meeting. It was always envisioned that we would seek CPA funding for that portion of the project.
I think it's an appropriate use of those funds.
Thank you. I think you're going to get questions like I just asked at town meeting, right?
Yep, maybe, maybe a few, yeah.
Maybe a few. Why are we doing this and what's this other piece? But thank you for the clarifying.
Any members of the public wish to ask a question about the Belmont Police Station CPA funding? Seeing none, we'll close that. We're not voting on these tonight because the article, we'll be voting on favorable or unfavorable on the articles as the warrant is out, but we're just going through the analysis of them in discussion tonight and allowing for public comment.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Town Hall Complex Slate Roof, Steve Dorance. This is $100,000, also in the historic preservation category for this lovely building in which we sit. Which has the, the cracks and the holes.
Can we fix the cracks?
And the pieces of the, oh, they cleaned up the pieces of the fireplace that fell out. That's good.
Mr. Chair, we're cleaning it weekly, these, right now.
Identify yourself and.
Yes, I'm Steve Dorance, the Director of Facilities. This is for a project that was first recommended by the CPC back in January to advance. I'm hoping for your support today. The request is for $100,000 to repair the slate roofs and the secondary damage that's been caused by the leaking roofs. For instance, in front of the HR department here, there's a five-foot square section of ceiling that's actually been removed because it was sagging,
ceiling that's actually been removed because it was sagging, structurally unstable. Beyond that, we found some scatterings of mold, um, which is problematic. You'll see some pictures of that in the file. The big challenge with this project, frankly, is, uh, we'll need a very significant crane on site to, uh, lift some equipment off the roof. We have flat sections of roof in two places, and those flat section are rubber membrane roofs, and they're obviously, they're leaking by virtue of the stains. Secondary to the repair of the slate roofs and the rubber boots, uh, we will also paint the secondary damage. So, that means that, for example, in the auditorium, the entire auditorium, um, ceiling will be painted and freshened up nicely.
In historically appropriate color.
Absolutely.
Is this all the buildings in this complex?
Yes, it is.
The three buildings?
Three buildings.
This is not to replace the roofs, this is spot repairs.
Spot repairs.
This says 75, this says 100. I was going to ask the same question for clarification.
So, the original appeal was for 75, and having gone before the committee, they were willing and eager, in fact, and worried that 75 wouldn't be enough, and increased it to 100.
Okay. The way, the thing about CPA funding is if you don't spend it, it goes back to the CPA buckets, so, it's not as though it goes away. So, I mean, I think this is fairly straightforward.
What is our, can I just, I mean, Floyd's left, or maybe he's here, what's our total amount we have? And, Tom, what's the total amount we have?
I don't know if I have the number.
I know we're not voting tonight, just curious, because this total is 2.7...
2.7, I think, is allocated this year.
Total projects, well, what, what amount do we have within the CP... Well, how much do we have to expend?
We're older.
Yeah, 2... I know we're older, I'm just curious as to how much.
Yeah, I don't know exactly. It's 2.7, we're basically allocating everything this year.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Thank you.
Margaret Veely, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. So, um, let's see, as of July 1st, so, um, that'll be the...
Yep.
I guess I should say June 30th is probably a better number. We'll have, um, 2.348 million.
That's what the state matches, well?
We already, we get the state match in the fall, so we got $217,000 in November.
So, total in the, but, total in the fund will be 2.3 million?
Yeah, a little over 2.3 million.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it's estimated, but...
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great, maybe you want to, I don't know if you want to stick around.
That's helpful. I just, you know, closer than I thought to the 2, 2.8.
All right. Any questions from members of the public regarding the Town Hall Complex Slate Roofs? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Michael, uh, next item is Restoration of the Tower Clock at the First Church in Belmont. Michael Flamang, this is also historical preservation, $66,250.
As a member of the First, First Church, I'm going to...
Yes.
...accuse myself.
Understandable.
Step away from the conversation.
Hello again.
Hello. Nice to see you.
So, you want to give us a brief synopsis of the, of the clock situation, please?
Marion Westgate, our board chair. I'm Michael Flamang, on the Property Care Committee of the church.
And, and you want to...
Marion Westgate, President of the Parish Board.
Great.
The project is the restoration of the historic clock that's in the tower of the First Church. It, it needs to be cleaned, and the restoration also includes a, a powered device for winding it routinely, which now it's done manually. And to do that work, we need to improve the ladder in, in the tower. It's all internal, but the result will be a working clock on the town green.
This is just for a ladder? No, this is to replace the clock.
And the ladders.
And the ladders.
Well, there's one, like, massive old ladder in there, and they're going to have a little ladder to a landing and another smaller ladder to the next one.
Now, there's a big, big ladder?
Monster ladder strung out.
How often does it have to be wound again, did you say?
Well, it'll be done, it's powered, it's...
Oh, no longer?
No, that's right.
Oh.
But it needs, needs to be attended, we need to wa, look at it, and, you know, make sure it's working properly.
And, and also, the important thing is to note that the reason why it failed at some point was it got dust and dirt from in there, and that you're going to be...
Cleaning it up and sealing.
Cleaning it and sealing it so that that doesn't occur again.
The one point that came up was, and we had, I don't know whether, you know, I guess at some point we could vote on this, you'll vote on this, but there was, there was some discussion, George is here, about, um, any potential sort of litigation or lawsuit.
This came up at the warrant committee, we had this very discussion.
Come up, you know, in terms of the fact that, that, you know, church and state issues, correct?
Yep.
So, I don't know whether, you know, in doing this, do we open our, I mean, I, it doesn't sound that to be the case, but, I mean, does it, is there a slim chance that we could be sued?
Well, the question was that this is not a religious purpose, and there was a case regarding stained glass windows, where the courts had said you could not use CPA money for that because that was religious, but this is a, a clock that the town purchased and put in the church.
Okay.
And there have been several cases in Eastern Massachusetts of, of CPA money going to do work of a secular nature on the church.
No, I said before, I support this, I just wanted to open up that point. George, you would agree?
I guess George is here, you want to, uh, just...
Well, I...
You need to go to a microphone, but... Go to that mic.
You can, well...
Or come to this mic.
You can come to the table, it's okay. Absolutely.
See, I was hoping that I would have an opportunity to, to volunteer to wind this thing, but now I'm not, that's a possibility.
Sorry.
You can climb the ladder if you want, for fun.
No, kidding.
Please.
George Halltown Council. I mean, it, in, I think in any CPA grant to a church, there's some litigation risk just because there's an awful lot of interest, um, in, you know, making law on this topic. So, uh, it's hard to quantify what, what that risk is. The, the Acton case, which we also were involved in defending, um, there were, there were two concerns about that that prompted the SJC to remand that to, to the lower court. One was that it, as the chair just mentioned, that it involved the restoration of stained glass windows, which had explicitly religious imagery, and the other was evidence that, 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 um, sort of the purpose was to support the operations of the church by, by taking on expenses that the church was struggling to, to, um, to meet. And this certainly lacks the, the first of those, we're talking about a clock that, but...
That's helpful.
I don't know what else I can say.
Oh, George, that's, I wanted to just revisit that briefly in my, I know we're not voting tonight, Mr. Chair, but I wanted to just get that. Thank you.
Well, I think that's a valid, that's, that's the valid question about this entire project.
I hope it moves forward.
Any other members of the public want to speak about the Town Hall Clock Restoration? Seeing none?
Thank you both.
Thank you for your consideration.
Next, Community Path Phase 1B Brighton Street to Clark Street Bridge Design, uh, put forward by Patrice Garvin on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, which is in the open space recreation category for $1 million.
We certainly support this.
It's our, it's our application.
Questions?
No.
Questions?
We've discussed this, I think we've discussed the community path a little bit over the last year or so.
Yeah, I, I, you know, no, I think we're working through, um, sort of, you know, whether it's viable on the south side as we voted, um, you know, whenever it was, so we're, we're continuing to do that.
But one side or the other, the funding is still the funding.
Yeah, the funding is still the funding. We need to move forward with this. When would this be on the May town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. This would be for the design funds, not the construction funds.
Yeah, I mean, I, certainly, I won't be a member of the board, but I strongly support this moving forward. It's, you know, bring, bring to sort of fruition at least one side of this path, be it on the south or the north, whatever ends up being the case.
And this is the second piece of the CPA money for design funds for the path. The first part was the, we, it was already approved in the fall, was the underpass at Alexander Avenue.
I believe you find strong support at town meeting because this is, the time has come, to move forward.
Any other, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess one, we're just coming, Patrice, can you provide an update, perhaps in the coming meeting, on where we are with the $400,000 that was previously allocated and what that process looks like?
Sure.
Any comments on the, uh, Community Path Design CPA project?
I think you have it in your town measure.
I guess the first time, no one's ever shown up for that. All right, great. Next, um, Payson Park Music Festival Bandstand Open Space Recreation Application, oh, sorry, I skipped one, but nevertheless, we'll do it. Uh, $90,000 of Tommy Olson.
I thought we had this, we already met with Tommy on this, right?
Um...
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you need me or no?
Yeah.
Come on up to me.
So, I didn't see the other ones, it was in a box on my chart here, but...
Yeah, why is that box on that one?
I don't know.
I don't know. First of all, huh?
Identify yourself, please.
Thomasine Olson, um, Payson Park Music Festival. First of all, I want to apologize for not having been at the warrant committee, but I had a family emergency, so had to go visit my daughter out of the country. I'm sure you're all sad that you didn't go with me, but, uh, at any rate, I, it was, I'm glad I went. Um, this project, as you might remember, is like three years, a three-year project. Um, I first asked for 50,000, the second year I asked for 50,000. This year, thanks to the help of, um, the Director of the Highway Department, Jay Markot, and the, um, uh, Peter, Peter Quinn, the architect, um, I got a lot of help from them with the design, and Peter recommended, uh, a place in New Hampshire, so, and, and Mr. Markot suggested that we add a little more to the request. So, the request went from 50 to 90. And recognizing what you said, Chairman Dash, um, if we don't have to use all of it, we won't. Um, but we will be purchasing a structure rather than it being stick-built.
Oh, good.
So, um, that should make it a, a lot simpler. I, I do have a question, like, I, I thought I heard, um, Mike Smith say that they've already chosen who, you know, they sent out to bid already. Should I be doing that now?
Probably not the one to ask that question, but...
I think you, it would seem to me you want to have, like, certainly appropriation is in place before you do that, but...
Yeah, when... Is there?
Kate?
What do you, yeah?
But, is this, is this an external consultant or is this just internally built? Is this internal? I mean, are we doing it, or is it, um...
This is just purchase of materials.
Jay Markot, Public Works Director. What Peter Quinn had done was, he had asked a, um, company that he has worked with in the past to give him basically a, um, as built, and it would be a, like, a prefab, and Benson Woods, I think, was the name of the company.
That's right.
And that is basically used as our, like, um...
Basis for the amount?
Basis for the amount, that we, we do have to go out to bid for this, absolutely.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
But now we have actual plans that we can, people can respond back with bids.
And this is using the existing slab that's there?
Yeah.
No, actually, it's, they're going to be using borings.
What's the build time?
Okay.
Uh, it's prefab, so probably, I, I, I can't even, I would say a month to build it, and then all the prep work that we have to do with the borings.
If you get appropriation at Tommy in the middle of May, you have to move quickly with the RFP, right?
My, my missed list is the festival, then.
I can't, I won't be able to spend till July 1. I, I definitely can go out to bid, yes.
Go out to bid, and then hopefully there's an appropriation. If not, then going out to bid doesn't...
Probably won't be there for this year's festival, then it sounds like, so...
How long would it take to, uh, for, to get the, the bid, um, if you're going out to bid, how long to get the responses?
Uh, typically, the minimum is three weeks.
Okay, so will you be going out to bid soon?
So, are we doing this? We're going out to bid?
I'll be doing it.
Okay. It'll be after town meeting appropriates the funds?
Correct. Once they appropriate the funds, I, I will out to bid, but I won't spend a dime until, uh, after July 1.
Okay, so I guess we have to wait for 2020.
Correct.
It could be installed in 2019, it's just maybe not in time for the festival, or you may not want to do the construction because that would disrupt the rest of the music for the summer, so...
Yeah, it depends upon, I do have, um, someone local who can do some of the prep work, um, if that's agreeable.
I don't know if that works or doesn't work, but, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
All right, anyone else? I'm sorry.
Waiting for the appropriation is probably the prudent course of action.
Sure.
Hopefully it's approved, and you can move forward.
Any comments on the Payson Park Music Festival Bandstand? Yes?
Juliet Jenkins. I'm just curious, is there any maintenance associated with this?
I would imagine the answer to that is yes, but, Jay?
Uh, Jay Markot directs Public Works. Yes, there will be maintenance to this. It's any type of structure in town, there's maintenance and upkeep to every, uh, facility, parks, uh, buildings, you name it, there's some type of maintenance cost.
We just don't know what it is because we don't have it. That's right?
Correct.
But it's a very minimal structure, Juliet. It's not, it's not, um, I can't imagine that there'd be much, uh... I was just curious, that's... Yeah, I mean, it's very minimalist.
And electricity is already run there.
Yes, there's already electricity, yeah.
Literally just taking this prefab structure and putting borings and dropping it in the...
Correct.
Thank you, Tommy.
So, any other comments? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Town Field Playground Restoration, uh, Open Space Recreation Project for $700,000. Courtney Eldridge, Jay may want to stick around.
This one is boxed, you want, that's why it's boxed, boxed because it could be funded over two ye, it would be funded over two years.
Thank you so much. I didn't, yep.
Oh, there you go.
I didn't introduce yourself and tell us about the project, please?
Hi. Courtney Eldridge, um, Chair of the Town Field Playground Committee.
Courtney Eldridge, um, Chair of the Townfield Playground Committee, we are tiny but mighty, there's five of us. Um, we are looking for $700,000 to take away the equipment that's there right now, much of it is broken, and, uh, replace it. We would look at, so the Townfield Playground is Beach and Waverly Street, sort of, um, cornered in there. And, right now, we are not using the full space that's available, so when we met with the Recreation Department and the DPW, they suggested taking a holistic approach to just view what we had available to us, and the Waterfield Design Group suggested that we take out the courts. That was partially because the Recreation Department and Jay took a look at that and said, well, these are really old, if we are going to do this, let's do it one time, let's do it correctly, and let's invest the time and money now. So, we also learned that the courts are oriented incorrectly, they should be oriented north-south, they're currently oriented east-west. So, we would be able to remove them, reorient them, put them back, the pickleball and basketball courts as they are, so we wouldn't be changing them, we would just be moving them. And then using the extra space that, right now, on the Beach Street side is completely unused and really not usable the way that it's situated now, and put some equipment in there. So, we would do a two-to-five, a five-to-12, and then an older slash exercise parkour area, which Blake, who runs the parkour program for the Rec Department, has been in communication with us as well, and is really excited about the possibility.
Anything to add, Jay?
Um, I think the two-phase funding that you're talking about earlier. So, right now, currently, the, the, how we deal with the CPA projects from a DPW standpoint, just like the PQ Playground and Grove Street, we have been u, so, in the beginning, for the first year, we use the consulting fund, money that is in that total project, to have the project move forward, to get the final design documents, bid documents, they review the bids, construction dom, and it's a, like a soup and nuts type package. We're splitting that consulting part out of that, so we can still have, uh, progress with this project, and, uh, funding would happen for the '21, uh, year. If that makes sense.
This does, um, Courtney, this does everything?
Everything.
So it says here, the funding schedule is, uh, $60,000, designed fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2021, $640,000 construction, $38,000 from fundraising and initiative. So, it's a $700,000 CPA funds plus $38,000 fundraising, for a total of $738,000.
That's correct, yep.
And, and, and so you'll continue the fundraising efforts to the extent that you can?
So, we haven't begun the fundraising efforts yet, we didn't want to put the cart before the horse, but...
Oh, your commitment is 38?
Yes, so as soon as, hopefully we get some town meeting approval, we would be able to start fundraising immediately, and possibly even break down some of that cost, knock down.
Took my son to when we lived on Davis Road.
It hasn't changed since.
Affection. And that was 24 years ago, 24 years ago, so, yeah.
They're from 1997, yep.
No, I, I want to say it's worth noting, it, on this particular one, that there's been some discussion within, uh, the Community Preservation Committee, and Marcus can certainly comment here as well, around what is appropriate to ask for in terms of private fundraising. You know, some of these projects do have private fundraising, others do not, what's the right amount? And I think one of the things that we will be taking up as a committee in the, sort of, coming months is trying to figure out if we can standardize those processes, so it's a bit clearer. Or not processes, policies.
Terms of approach or fundraising, you mean?
Yeah, what, what should, what should be fundraising? And what's the appropriate amount?
Oh, I see.
Because it seems like each one that comes forward, there's some expectations for front, private fundraising, it's a little bit unclear for applying consistently.
And once you get the money, then the fundraising stops, right? I mean, once you appropriate money, then you, you, so once you've been appropriated, then the likelihood of getting additional fundraising at that point sort of dries up, is that correct? I mean, so, so, once you've gotten the appropriation from town meeting...
Then the appropriation, like in this case, is $38,000 short.
No, no, I understand that, yeah, but...
So I think you get the impetus to get the fundraising.
But should, should the expectation have been $50,000, should it have been $18,000?
How do you determine that?
What was the right level, and that's, I think...
We're gonna adopt rules that are gonna...
We're gonna try to put some policies in place that try to address that.
So you say have an expectation around some of these community, sort of requests that, you know, the expectation of the CPC is that you, you raise five or 10% of, of the overall project costs through fundraiser, private fundraising.
That is the goal.
That's a good idea.
I think the past projects have been 5%.
That's a great idea, though.
Yep. That will be in the CPA rules.
I like that idea a lot.
Any other, any public comment on the Townfield Playground Restoration? Seeing none, move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clay Pit Pond Preservation and Restoration of Vegetation, Open Space Recreation for $20,000, Mary Trudeau.
Mary here?
Mary's here.
Mary's not here.
Dan's here.
Anybody wants, well, well, you've...
I'm, I'll put on my Conservation Commission hat.
Yes, well, you're, you're a member of it, sure.
So, um, this was Clay Pit?
Yes.
Okay, so this is $20,000 to help restore the vegetative buffer around the pond, the bank of the pond. And it's mainly to remove non-native vegetation and hope the native vegetation...
And continuing to treat it for a series of, period of time.
It's a three-year, uh, process, yes.
Because, so it doesn't grow back.
Right.
And that way, too, because, I, I was at the C, at the Warren Committee when it was explained by Mary, that, that, as you know, if you've been to Clay Pit Pond, there's sort of an impenetrable vegetable, vegetation barrier in large parts of the pond, to make the pond accessible in places.
And visually accessible, too.
Buckthorn and other non-native, you know, invasive species that have sort of just taken over.
Like, how, how does the, the high school build impact this? I mean, they're gonna be construction, they need pile drivers, and...
So, they, they won't be, I think the closest for their, their, um, water line and sewer line is about 25 feet from the pond.
The only comment I make, we're able to do this, notwithstanding all that major construction that's gonna be taking place.
Well, the high school has a buffer zone around the pond.
I'm just asking the question, that's all, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, if it's, if it's impacted at all, we won't, this won't, this won't be done, so.
Just curious, okay.
Anybody want to speak on the Clay Pit Pond Preservation? The next one's also, I guess, for you. Rock Meadow Habitat Preservation, Control of Non-Native and Invasive Vegetation, Open Space, $25,400. This is also coming from Mary Trudeau, our, our Conservation Agent, and this is similar, but not the same thing as Clay Pit.
Right, so this is our Rock Meadow, our 70 acres of, um, conservation land. That, that's why this is actually our first open, purely open space project. See, the other one was more of a recreation, it was under, Recreation Falls under Open Space, but it's...
Oh, this one, the, Clay Pit is recreation, and this one's open?
Because it's got to do with the, the path, the community, the intergenerational walking path, whereas this one's just strictly...
Well, and, and Clay Pit is really a park, so this, so it's, um, it falls under the, you guys, the...
Yeah, the Parks Commission.
Parks Commission.
But, but Mary had, had made mention of how it was one of the, one of the oldest areas, or the only areas of meadowland.
So, so Rock Meadow is, yes, so Rock Meadow is about, it's now about 30 acres of meadow. And this will, um, it's be, um, it's being invaded by Black Swallowwort mainly, but also, there's buckthorn, there's Japanese knotweed, but Black Swallowwort is the...
That, this funding would take care of some of that?
Yeah, so again, it's a three-year...
Oh, I see.
Um, it's over three years, so it's...
To keep coming back, so it doesn't re, re-return in that...
Beautiful area, a lot of folks use it, they bring their dogs on there, right?
And the Black Swallowwort, I guess they're saying that Rock Meadow's a place where the monarch butterflies stop in, and that the Black Swallowwort, they get mistaken for milkweed, and they lay their eggs on it, but then the eggs die because it isn't milkweed, and that this would remove that invasive species and help the monarch butterfly population, so.
Correct.
Any comments on this, on Rock Meadow? Yes?
Kate Bowen, uh, Town Meeting Member, School Committee Member. My question has to do with what the conservation practices are, and what kind of treatments would be used to preserve the, or eliminate the non-native species and preserve the native species?
So, I think for the Black Swallowwort, we, um, we had a program that, from the USDA, the state, and about 10 or 15 years ago, and so we did do some foliar spraying, I think, once, but it, it would be cutting, the, the Black Swallowwort gets a pod, it's like, it looks like a milk, um, and it, the seeds are like milkweeds, they're fluffy white, so it's to cut it before it can ever go to seed. But also, they will do some foliar spraying for that.
So, my concern...
Minimize it, minimal.
My concern is to do with pesticides and herbicides.
Correct, yep.
Um, particularly near, well, in that location, near the community gardens, and in the other location near the school property.
The, um, the Black Swallowwort is not really so close to the community gardens, it's in the farther meadows from there.
So, if the town, I don't know if there is an IPM policy with the town, in terms of how they approach that, it would be great to know what it is, and, um, further concern using glyphosate, which has now been designated as a carcinogen in many countries, and, at least in California.
It doesn't say in here what the actual spray is. There, some of it's mowing, some of it's spraying.
And some of it's hand removal as well.
Some of it's hand pulling of it, yeah, but it doesn't say what the, what the herbicide would be.
I think it's an important point, Kate, man, certainly, Mary, certainly, this is appropriated, you know, take that into consideration.
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, we're, this is using a firm that's, that's very familiar with this sort of thing, right? I mean, I believe it was, Mary was talking about how hard it was to find a company that would do this sort of work, because it's a, kind of a specialized field. But, um, nevertheless, um, worth noting, um, and, uh, again, we're not voting on it tonight, we're just getting comments, so, thank you.
Thank you for filling in, appreciate the information.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And that's all eight?
That's all eight, believe it or not.
Is that it, we're done, that, no more applica, the application process is closed?
It's closed, yes, for this year, yep. Next item, discussion and possible vote on incinerator site post-closure use, as we promised, March 18th, which is now, we would move, move on this. I would like to note that I know there's been, we've been talking about this God for like nine months, or since last summer, I know at least when we had the first of the large public meetings. I want to thank everyone who's participated in this process, I think we have many, many public meetings, we had many, many people, both very crowded in Town Hall and extremely crowded in here, and over the Beach Street Center, I think we had like 100 people over there, it's been, the, the community turnout has been the envy of a lot of our communities around us, who don't get that kind of, um, response from the public who care about things, I'm glad that Belmont does. The process, how we got to where we are, we started with, we went out, we had a visioning session in, in the auditorium, where we had a big board, and Glenn wrote ideas from people, we ended up with 17 ideas of post-closure use for the incinerator site. We then created a matrix, so, of, um, of different kind of factors, so we could objectively, um, analyze those 17, not based on who made the, the, um, request, or who made, had the idea, but how they all worked relative to each other. We cut that down in half using the matrix, we then did some more research into the remaining ones, we cut that down to five, where we stand today. And this was all done through the use of the matrix and from doing some studies, some of them were a little more difficult to discern the, the ta, the details on, like the di, diurnal digester is a very technical thing that we had to get a consultant in, there were some, like a bike and skate park didn't require so much, or open space field didn't require quite so much research. But now we have to decide, because we do have a deadline, and Mr. Clancy has stated, from Community Development, about having to start designing the cap in May, and we need to figure out the post-closure use first. We had a big conversation back, when was that, in February, with the Department of, uh, State Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, where essentially, I think that this point, in my opinion, they've taken two of those five essentially out of our hands, where they said that we could not, um, we could not generate revenue from the site, and that we could not even do it with a public-private partnership, and that pretty much puts the kibosh on the skating rink and the anaerobic digester. They, we, while we could go back legally to the legislature and get our, um, enabling legislation redone, A, we don't really have time because of the May deadline I talked about, and also, the state didn't give us the, the land. What the state did is, they, they appraised it, they sold us the land for the appraised value, and then they credited us the cost of remediating all the contamination on it, so effectively, we paid zero for it. But that was appraised value restricted to municipal use only with no revenue generation. And they said that if we wanted to go back and change the legislation and make it revenue generating, then they would want to reappraise it, and we could end up owing them money, because the appraised value would then go up and could be above the cost of the remediation of the, because if you could make that an office building or something, it becomes a way more valuable property, if you take off the, um, municipal use restrictions. So, I wasn't really, I'm not thinking, oh, at least for me, not terribly interested in going back to the state. A, A, they may not approve the change.
Very uncertain.
I think that's extremely challenging and risky to do that.
Because I think they'd said, said at DCAM, that one of the reasons they sold it to us, rather than keep it, was because it wasn't going to be used for anything profit-making, if it was gonna be used for something profit-making, the state would have kept it and not given it to us in the first place.
Agreed.
So, they weren't gonna give it to us to make a fortune, because that was something that they would have done. So, what we have left then are, would be three, um, choices. After all this process, open space, bike skate park, and a Belmont Light, uh, solar array, solar farm, battery storage, and associated sort of uses. I just want to throw out my thoughts on it, and then we can, you know, have a discussion about it. I mean, I think the open space piece, I mean, we're kind of land poor in the town, we have a lot of open space, and we really don't have a lot of land for some of these other things that we could use, and that this isn't the greatest open space, and it's contaminated, and it's on a weird topography, and the DPW, whatever we do is gonna continue to utilize it, so with DPW trucks and, you know, decaying leaves for another storage up there, it's not the greatest place to spend bucolic afternoon, so. I wasn't, I think that would be almost a, kind of not making a decision for open space. The bike skate park, well, a great idea, if you've seen our meetings in the last year, we can barely clean, maintain, and police the parks we have, we've had to like search the couch cushions for change to pick up the trash at Joey's Park, I mean, that's where we are right now. So, it's, to, while it's a great idea to build and maintain bathrooms, and have police go up to, it was a pretty remote site, clean graffiti, maintain it, mow it, uh, replace light bulbs and such, it's a good idea, I just, there's just simply no money for that.
At this point.
On going, you could maybe build it, I don't know, with CPA money or something, but we just can't, we can't maintain that right now. The last part of it is the solar and battery storage, which by the process of elimination, you probably see where I'm going with this. The, the solar and battery storage, I thought, for me, was the best, it has very low neighborhood impact, and we heard from the neighbors very clearly that they didn't want one, which was, I think the bike skate park would be an issue for that. It meets our Climate Action Plan goals, um, it's less of a disturbance to the natural state and the soil, because you're not building a building, you just, they, they put them on there with some ballast, and those, especially the energy storage, the batteries are basically cargo shipping containers that you just place there. You could remove them if the technology changes, Belmont Light's talked about doing, um, public broadband, they need servers, like a server farm for that, there's a location, you could maybe use that. For that, that's why I said Belmont Light is sort of uses, because I don't want to tie it down to one technology that might change. Um, this'll be easy to swap pieces in and out. Um, I know that Chris Roy, the Belmont Light General Manager, was here, he was talking about how we would really, to make it a viable solar array, he would need to have a two-megawatt, and that he would need the whole parcel. Because I know a lot of the bike skate park people said you could put bike skate park and solar around it, but Chris had said, really, he, he would need the whole thing, um, not the DPW piece, but the rest of it, pretty much the whole thing to make this viable. And, uh, it would seem that if we did it, I would be in favor of doing a vote for the old incinerator site post-closure use to be a solar array, battery storage, and other Belmont Light uses, because I don't want to tie it in to any one thing, along with the DPW use, I don't know, someday maybe Belmont Light wants to build a building there, but we're not gonna get there now, so.
So, Mr. Chair, thank you for that summary, that's very helpful.
That is my piece.
Since I've been thinking about this in 2010, I love the idea of a solar farm. I always wondered, you know, as I visited my son at Middlebury College, I would see solar farms on my way up to Vermont, so I love that idea, and I support it wholeheartedly, and if we can make that work, that's great, and I think the storage unit idea as well is a wonderful idea, so if that's what, um, you support, I support that as well.
I would note for the battery storage for the public, that, what that does is it allows you at night, when the power is cheaper to buy than during the day, that Belmont Light could buy, get power at night, stored in the batteries, and then discharge it and use it during the day, and thereby not, you know, you'd be buying the, the energy at a cheaper time of day.
The furthers are, you know, are, are, the action that, that we're taking, you know, at the Belmont Municipal Light Department, you know, um, through a lot of your leadership on that, those issues, and, and also the Energy Committee, uh, we just heard from Chris Roy earlier today, it furthers that cause, if you will, by having a solar farm there and these storage units, so I'm fully on board with that idea.
And it doesn't impact the neighbor, the neighbors will never even know it's there.
It's, it's somewhat of a passive use, if you want to think about it from that point, point of view, but also a passive use that creates, you know, enormous benefit to this community.
And, and Chris has experience having built a solar array in Concord, which was, which is a plus.
Uh, I'm in, I'm in agreement, I think you did a nice job of walking through the process of elimination. I, from the beginning, thought that there's been some, uh, very natural upside to the community associated with PV. I think when Chris talked to us about the energy storage, I think that was potentially even more intriguing, and made the combination, a nice powerful combination. I think it has the benefit of being, I think you used the word passive, I think it's a good word mark, it fits nicely in, uh, that area that does have a fair bit of open space, intends not to disrupt that. It also has a close proximity to a number of neighbors, and I think, uh, would, would, uh, hopefully be a relatively low impact while having explicit benefits for the, the community, both in terms of Climate Action Plan goals, but also in terms of a potential, uh, you know, revenue generation that would offset, uh, the, the taxpayers' rates. And I think that, uh, that, that makes it a very, very good, uh, and viable option.
And we did talk with DCAM about that, originally, they were not, um, saying that we could do a solar farm until they realized that we actually had a municipal light plant, and then they said, oh, we didn't realize you had a municipal light plant, that's different, so, because Belmont, Belmont Light could not do this as a public-private partnership with an outside firm, Belmont Light would have to do it as a town entity in order for this to work. Um, and again, we're not doing this tomorrow, this is one of those things where, you know, the, we have to do the cap, and design the cap, and build the cap, and this is gonna be years, to whatever use we end up choosing, it's gonna be a while before the use gets actually put on the ground, so there's time to, um, work all of that out.
And I would encourage us during that process to think about how we use that space, there's multiple parcels there, and I know Chris had indicated a desire to use sort of all of it, I think we should sort of figure out whether or not we can successfully use all of it, let's carefully place, uh, PV or storage or where it sits, and, uh, maybe remain somewhat open-minded, uh, the one particular piece that is owned by the town with less restrictions. I'd love to just make sure we're being thoughtful about that, and is there something
Great.
different we might do there as part of the design process?
It is sort of landlocked, if you will, but we might want to think about what else we do there.
The beauty of doing this, of doing this kind of a use, the solar, is that it can be easily removed. You're not, you're not building a skating rink that's, you know, there, this is something you could just pick up the shipping containers and take them out, if you decided to so, change the use. It's also, I think, um, the cap would be less intensive, and hopefully cheaper, if you were, I don't know, Glenn, if you were to build, if you weren't putting, sinking a foundation of a building through the cap and puncturing the cap, or rather just putting these items on top of the film.
Do we need to hear from our Director?
I was going to open this up to a lot of people, but yes, Glenn? I, I also understand that there are seven, there were 17 ideas, so there are 16 constituencies who probably will not be pleased with the decision that was not their choice, however, we can't do everything. And I think, I hope at least, if you don't like the outcome, at least respected the process, I think that we did the best we could. We heard from everybody on everything, and, um, we did hear, hear you and listen to you, and we did take everything that was said on all these choices into, um, great consideration, so.
I'm Mr. Chair, Glenn Clancy, Director of Community Development, um, just to elaborate on Tom's comment, through the capping process, we have the ability to regrade, re-sculpt that site, I mean, there's a lot of soil, a lot of piles up there. Through the capping process, we'll have the ability to regrade that site, uh, and so now, you know, once we lock down exactly what uses we're looking at on each parcel, then we can begin to look at what it's gonna take to regrade the site to accommodate those uses. Yeah, I, I think, uh...
Is there anything you wanted to add to what we were talking about, about the solar?
No, I, I don't think so, I, um, you know, I, just the, the comment about the, the, uh, cost of the cap. The estimate has always been a baseline cost, uh, factoring in a very simple cap. The, the costs above and beyond that simple cap to accommodate buildings or other uses was never really part of that estimate. And so, you know, we, we find ourselves now with a use like this, really back at that baseline estimate of approximately, I think, what, $3.6 million was the latest.
You'll, you'll reevaluate based on, if we are moving forward with this, what
Oh, sure.
the additional cost could be?
Sure.
Great.
Yeah, we'll work with Belmont Light to figure that out.
Yeah, wonderful.
Open up to members of the public discussing incinerator site post-closure use?
Just wanted to ask another question, so...
You identify yourself.
Oh, Juliette Jenkins, Precinct 3 Town Meeting Member, um, when you're in Rock Meadow, and you go over the bridge, and you're in Met State land, you actually walk back and can see the incinerator site? So I know we're giving sort of a broad idea of what it might be, but basically with Belmont Light, do we have any idea how tall something might be, like an energy storage structure?
We haven't designed the, anything, however, they, we did look at, um, samples of the, uh, the energy storage, and they are basically shipping containers, like you would see.
10 feet tall, maybe?
I don't know, however tall a shipping container is.
And solar panels, the same thing, that's basically the height?
You've seen solar farms along the Turnpike and that sort of thing, I assume it would look like that.
Yeah.
Just curious.
I mean, I don't think we haven't put it out to bid and purchased particular items, this is just talking about the use. The implementation of the use, obviously, that's a whole different discussion.
Just because it's bordering this rather pristine area, so that's why I was wondering how that would be factored in.
I think those are things that we should factor in, in the design, right? We should be thoughtful about proximity, about neighbors, all of those concerns, exactly.
For open space.
But that's what the beauty of this as a use is, that it's very, it's for, it's not tall, it's not noisy, it's not disruptive, it's not gonna, you know, cause issues, so.
Yeah, and I think the ability to regrade the site will give us some latitude to address some of those, those visual concerns for users of Rock Meadow.
I think we can be clever about that, yeah, but good point, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we are done talking about the incinerator site, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to vote on this, I've been talking about this for nine years, so I appreciate that.
I want, Chair would entertain a motion to have the, the incinerator site post-closure use be for solar array, battery storage, and other Belmont Light uses, as well as DPW use.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are now be, going to be going into executive session on two items, do we have to, can we do them both at once, or do we have to go in, come out, go in?
Okay, I move.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, I don't know, how do you want to do this?
We're gonna, we're gonna move on both of them.
So I move, uh, to go into executive session to hear and discuss a complaint brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual.
And?
And I also, uh, move that we go into the executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if the Chair, uh, because the Chair has declared that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating portion of the public position.
You ran out, huh?
I like, I, I read War and Peace tonight, you have me reading so much stuff here.
Finish the sentence.
Position of the public body, possible acquisition of land.
And the Chair has so made that determination.
Second.
We're in session, folks, we're in session, please.
All this roll call vote.
Mark Low, aye.
Tom Capito, aye.
Adam Dash, aye, we will be back.
So, no one liked the cemetery, no one liked the Pet Sematary idea? No one liked the Pet Sematary idea? Did anyone like the Pet Sematary idea? So, Bob McGlaughlin, call me, he's not going to come in for this. He's sitting, going to sit in here, but he's not going to come into this. He's not going, he's going to come into the second piece.
And Nancy, who are on the cultural council, Jesse is one of our candidates for select one.
I saw you. I did too.
Right, yeah.
I recognized you actually.
All right, the traffic, oh yeah. So, about the thing at McLean Hospital, it looked like it got shot down? Did it get, planning board just said no? Yay! But also, you know, there's someone, so there's at McLean Hospital, I forget if you guys, it's across the street from where I live. So, there's all these different parcels that were going to be developed, do you remember this?
Well, they, yeah, but they built, they built on part of it already.
Right, they did a bunch of them, but they didn't build the R and D and they didn't build, it was supposed to be like an assisted living thing. So, I don't even know which side it is, the R and D or the assisted living, but what they came forward with was nothing like the R and D that was approved as the assistant. No one really cares, no one really cares about it being.
There'll be jobs, there'll be jobs, there'll be traffic.
Oh, so that tiny little school, so I really have to follow this. Tiny little school that serves incredibly many kids, but mostly. I don't think, no, I think Arlington, I think Arlington's a different, it's a different name. Like, might be right, but I thought it was a different name. But it's a high school.
That's the Arlington, but my teacher's.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but the other parcel, you know, it had been so, it was very high density.
Right. It's a huge concept. But that was too family.
Yeah, that was a terrible time.
But, but, but that's still a very popular concept.
She's been there for twenty years.
But no, Sunrise. Sunrise Village in Arlington is exactly that. So, they have a memory unit, they have like just, you know, the self-association. So, that concept still exists, but Northland obviously isn't interested in doing it.
Oh, no, Northland just wants to come in and do the thing that they do, which is.
They wanted to do those fancy two thousand, I mean, I was just in one of those townhomes up there. It's almost three thousand square feet and, I mean, it's.
So, oh, so it's living, not just white market luxury.
They were calling it senior property, but that doesn't really mean anything either. You can't advertise it.
Yes, you can. Fifty-five plus, you can absolutely.
But if that's a future of making it a community, they have no intention of making it like an actual community or whatever. They were like.
Well, if you can actually have an age restricted, this is the real thing. You can have an age restricted community, that's like the one thing that you're allowed to do by Fair Housing. No, they weren't, they weren't, no, no, no.
But that's what I'm saying, they weren't.
They were doing something incredibly self-serving, which was how to make the highest and best possible use for them, not for us. Because we now have a bus stop up at McLean. They said when that came in that that was not going to have any heat, that was not going to be a drain or a school or a bridge. So, it's just even more expensive. But anyway, I'm not quite sure what they're going to come back with.
But I think just in terms of like, whatever can be built on this available land, we should do some work towards meeting or closing procedures, you know. So, if they weren't going to give us a lot of help with that, then, you know, it's a person from a lot of places. We have a lot to say in what the team says.
In your, all your public meeting pads, we are sitting on the cultural council and although we have a fair number of people actually on our list, we have a hard time making quorum. And that's why we're here tonight, to define the size of our committee and to remove someone who's been probably well-meaning, but just off, off the radar.
Came to one meeting.
We just can't even communicate, but if you find any interested in supporting local art by reviewing grants and being involved with a hundred percent administrative procedures that are somewhat honorific for the amount of money we are giving, the hard sell, aren't we? But they support local art.
I think we're being honest.
I, I'm trying to be honest because you want the right person on the job. Someone was saying, again, they had their neighbor, Sarah, on our committee, had her neighbor come on, she came to one meeting, she's like, this isn't for me, I like to make art. I don't want. Sarah, I think it's the easiest thing. That's because you're a very organized person. You are, like, there's certain, there's people on the committee who are incredibly organized.
But it's only really cool if I'm meeting for a year.
I know, but you have to actually respond to your applicants, you have to actually talk to them before the next meeting. You have to actually show up, like, we just have some really well-meaning people who, like, I'm not sure.
We can't fill any of the administrative positions.
I've been chair for two years.
From the existing membership is the problem.
Well, I'm going to guilt you guys, you're going to do it.
I know, I'm like, I'm. I have to go off in 2020. She, she doesn't want to do it anymore.
Yeah, I can't, it's making me sick, I mean.
Nancy doesn't want to take it on.
And she's incredibly diligent, how's the art of.
The secretary is retired, Nancy would go off too, so it's like.
Yeah, it's just that your organizations have these moments, where it's like.
And you might know, because you get younger kids, some of the new blood in town.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we have some, we have some good people who care a lot about the arts and too. Academics who are regulars and, you know, so I.
It's more than just caring, you have to actually, if you've ever done fundraising, like, you have to actually sort of, I don't mind pushing some pieces. That's the problem, it can be time consuming if you actually really, if this person organized the playground. She's misspoke because the park really has changed in the last twenty-five years, but that's okay. She's incredibly organized. Anyone who she knows is the perfect person, like, if you happen to be with the playground people, because they're new to town, they're busy, they have that many needs. We just have to be of the mindset.
It's also really good for somebody who's retired.
Right, which is what John's recommendation, just retired from Brandis.
From Brandis, has to be Brandis?
No, she did, just, John recommended.
Oh, the person that John recommended.
Whereas the person that Arlen recommended, she said, ah, next year's going to be better for me. So, she's not coming on, so I only have one name to put forward.
It's Alex, a man woman.
She was a, she was Burbank's music teacher.
Is she doing an art thing now? So, I think I just saw something on Facebook about. Please ask her, perfect.
We could use a man and a minority.
Yeah, we could use some men and minority. But anyway.
I saw that you, I saw that there were openings, so I was like, I posted on my Facebook.
Thank you. And I had all these likes, no one said yes, I just.
And I think, I think often the problem is like, yeah, defining the job, defining the value of the job.
It's very defined, the value is a little bit harder to define. Basically, it's less than six thousand dollars that the state gives us if we follow the procedures. I personally think that most of them enjoy getting a life loss. It's not as powerful as we might hope, but I think they enjoy it. I think the schools in particular really, and the Beach Street Center.
I don't think people come to us if they have to raise ten thousand dollars, I mean, they just don't, they don't.
Right, right, because we've worked hard to save the size of our grants. But it's worth not giving up that money. Like, World Film was unhappy when they didn't get our money, now they got it this year, but they missed the deadline.
That was, that's always been the issue with making TA, the deadline isn't.
World Bank is not good at making that deadline.
I'm the liaison for the PTAs and they have complained about that. The deadline is October fifteen and you haven't formulated your programs yet. But we actually got a good deal of grants, we gave away.
Well, no, but can I recommend?
We were supposed to get it going in the spring, really.
Yes, one person.
Are you still on Burbank?
I have wiped out possible.
But you know people? Yeah, so pass this on, because they just need to assign it to one person to pick one thing that came last year.
Yeah, we didn't give to Burbank this year.
No, no, and they haven't put in a couple of years. Burbank and Winbrook have not been putting them in. But Winbrook used to.
We had one for the soapbox, and I can't remember what school it was, one of the ones we already gave a grant to. But it was very, it was a really small group of ten. And the, Chenery had also applied for another grant, which was really more wide, you know, had more wide effect in the school.
So, yeah, if it can be something that's.
The multicultural night, we gave them a grant for that.
If they can be an after-school thing that anyone, or they, we can get a sense that there's a large group, when you compare against something that's happening during the school day that's going to serve like three hundred kids and we're going to serve thirty, but I mean, that's not just.
The big yellow bus does field trips.
Right, but I think after-school is where a lot of kids are and where it can get boring. So, I think that's a really good idea. And I remember we did do one, the Walder School held one, that was invited to the general public that they allowed to come. It was like a green maker workshop or something.
The kids read the story and then they go to the fountain and try them in.
Oh, that sounds like great, that's great.
Jimmy Fallon does that on TV, watch on YouTube, it's hysterical.
Yeah. That does sound great.
And so, I've been looking to have them as.
Well, just get it done early.
The biggest challenge is, well, the biggest challenge at Burbank right now is the size. You can't, it's really hard to do something for one class now that we have four, you know, for one grade level or whatever at a time. But we can't, all the kids seem to be, she's, she's at the gym at the same time.
What about the cap?
So, the cap is, it's just like, but we can do, we can do some, some kids at a time, you know, it's like.
Well, I think that's how Wellington did it, because like, we would have that owl woman and when I was the Richmond person, you know, we would do, she would do two programs.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what we've done now. And so, it's, but it's done in shift, just thinking of how we can.
We should talk to Wellington, that's because they're used to it, because it's big there.
And it looks like they, I mean, that was one reason for they were the model. It wasn't that, it was for school, they have a couple of, you know, a couple of classes running around somewhere. And they kind of shifted up like they, there's this, this year with fourth grade class was enormous. And so, they added a semi-grade teacher and they moved it to third grade with those kids. And then this year, whatever, all of the grades was being good. So, when they hit, when that grade level, by the way, hits Chenery next year.
Oh, it's going to be huge.
I'm lucky because I got a third grader this year, I'm a year behind them for some reason.
No, no, there's always these bubbles, there's always these bubbles.
And our year went back to like what was normal like six or seven years ago. So, it's. I think they're up to twenty now.
That's so nice.
It was just like, it's like.
Right, right, that's so nice.
Yeah, it's really nice. And the teachers just feel, you know, they have eight months to time to like spend the time.
Much, much more pleasant job.
Yes.
That wasn't us. Well, it's the deadline is the October fifteen, who knows? Right, yeah.
Basically, if we'd like to come up to the teachers to.
Right, sure, I mean, if you could plan it a year in advance, wouldn't that be great, but.
Exactly, so we have, because you always run into these issues with the taking time, taking time where the teachers all feel stressed about time, you know, it's how, we have to, I mean, they have to have, have speed over.
Mm-hmm, right, if she could just come up with a paragraph, that's all you need.
I know, I'm just like, it sounds funny right now.
And I actually, I send reminders to the PTAs about the grant. And then I go to meet Belmont and I talk to them all.
But you know what might be a good thing?
And then, right before, right before the deadline, I send what on, out on listserv, so they get plenty of reminders.
Except because that's a very busy time and they're just settling, so maybe we should do one, if you would, like, right around Memorial Day. So, as they're ending their year, before they go on summer, it'll be in their brain. Because I know, I was a teacher for a decade, that when I come back, you know, August fifteenth, all I'm thinking about is what's the new procedure that I have to do at school? What are all these names? What's the new equipment that came? It's just like all these different responsibilities. It's particularly important and back to school, nice.
And you have like the new, we always have the school president, when one comes in each year, you know.
Right, right.
Oh, what are they doing?
This is like what we should do.
Yeah, so it's always a little crazy, but I think, you know, like I said, we'd really like to get five.
I think, is there any, what I'm trying to say is like that of solar farm, is there any of that whatever tech ed program at the Ch, at the Wellington, or at the elementary, it's only at the middle school? Because I know they're trying to do a Girls Who Code thing, that's early, like, that would be a super thing for us to support. We would love to.
They'll do that at the library, if they're older.
And they, they just kind of, you know, they, I mean, they have money available.
They have the tuition.
Yeah, they have tuition.
Okay.
But that's, I mean, that's, in our school where we don't also have a, we just let basically.
Oh, really? I wonder how the other schools do that. I know it's changed.
Wellington has closed up, I mean, it changed, they have both basically workshops.
That's interesting, yeah.
I mean, everybody has their own flavor.
No, 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 and also I feel like watching the town, at least the parents, it's changed, my youngest is seventeen. So, just in these twenty years, you know, just the kind of families that are coming in and what they want and what they need has changed. As have I.
I know, we have more and more parents that, I mean, every year, the after program adds. And of course, like the school has.
Oh, right, well, that's just greater Boston. We are just a more and more populous area now. What I was interested in is that with that study about traffic, and they say that our traffic is not the worst of major cities now. Isn't that fascinating? Like, I've always, it's not, no, 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 we don't really make it in the top five now.
They're talking about Boston.
I think they're talking about greater Boston though, I really do. I think, I always think of our roads as the suckiest, but apparently, in the intervening time, like Atlanta is just smog heaven and a huge traffic nightmare.
Well, New York is horrible, Manhattan.
Right, I tell you that, right, and LA really is horrible, I forget what else was on the list.
Don't drive.
Seattle, oh, and San Francisco is horrible.
And DC is.
Yeah, so that's a thing, that's a, I thought it was fascinating, so we've got a problem with being horrible. Because I do feel like we're so congested, like, where I live up at McLean, that Mill Street, and we think it's because of ways, it's just bumper to bumper.
Well, Brighton Avenue is horrible because they're avoiding the fresh ponies.
Oh, yes, that even front park stuff, right?
Well, but they're avoiding fresh ponies, everybody's coming in from Wayland and, you know, Lexington, whatever.
All those other stupid.
Nobody's going to want to go all the way to the two, they're just like, nobody wants to do that or pick up a.
It's horrible, I go through the Fresh Pond Rotary every morning and every evening.
Oh, that's horrible.
The evening can be as much as twenty minutes to get through a brush hour.
Yeah, I know, it's a real thing. And, yeah, I mean.
Yet, no one wants to pay any money on a tour of roads, like, the roads are, I'd never make it.
So, when, being by Mill Street and everything, there is a plan that.
You were telling me this, the travel.
Instead of having the crazy intersection of, like, having two, two roundabouts, like, the one, not a big road, you could roundabout like what you get a break.
So, Mill. So Mill and Concord will be one?
Yeah.
And then I think it's, um, you were, I, because you and I were talking on the phone, I think, was it, um, Winter and Concord, so those two?
Probably like the Grove Street.
I think it's interesting to ask him to tell you. No, no, because he's the one, so.
So, the roundabouts rather than. We understand, um.
Just past that.
It's still in the works, but, yeah, 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 it's on, it's on, it's on deal yet, but.
The roundabout that would be, Winter, we heard.
Yep, because of the Belmont Country Club stuff, right?
But I'm just saying, what's tough about that particular lot is, you have to take part of our middle land. So it's like, so if the real estate gets a little tight on that one, do you want, yeah, the middle and Concord, it's nice. So, you're at a point in the conversation where you're talking about location, try to sue, don't run the boats, and you try to figure out whether to take the middle land or structure it, or should you improve a more conventional intersection, or, 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 have the roundabout.
What's a more conventional intersection like that?
You know, just, just a T-intersection, you know, like, almost what it is.
That's what I'm saying, isn't it, isn't it a T-intersection? How about a light there? No, they're the worst.
Well, I'll tell you what, we tried to. You know, the law. We're on two thousand, maybe late nineties, early two thousands.
Yeah.
And add up the twenty-five percent design, and, and, uh, one of the property owners that lived between Winter Street and the gas station bought it, I mean, this is just.
There's, there's three houses there, so I know.
I will never forget this. And we had the twenty-five percent open hearing, which mass dogs.
Well, I think it's a pretty good point, because.
No, yeah.
Because there's more decisions, like, exactly where that.
Because it's, it's tip-funded, mass deals, it ends up being a facility for projects, so they're the ones who run the twenty-five percent design and public hearing. When that hearing was all the guy from Mass Dog, turned to me and my boss at the time, and said, until you get the residents in that intersection straightened out, they're never coming back.
Maybe they've moved, I know it's one of.
There you go. Well, that's probably why I didn't want you to build the light.
Yeah, we didn't want the construction there.
It's funny, I care so much more, I think truthfully, I can't.
I, I don't know, maybe, but, 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 you have to understand that traditionally, um.
Such a pushback.
You know what we are, we're a small community, we're a, we, traffic signals just make it a more urbanized community, we don't like it, and so I think, I think some of that mindset has changed over the years, like, I think there are people now that still have signals at Belmont Center, even though, we looked at it when we redesigned Belmont Center in two thousand and ten.
I remember this.
We looked at signals on both sides of the bridge, try to coordinate two sets of signals, and it just doesn't work, um, what we're looking at now is, taking some, looking at some of the approaches into Belmont Center, restricting them to make the traffic a little more manageable, and then maybe you could, you could cap it off with a signal that would make it more efficient to manage, because if you take some of the approaches out, um, so you don't sort of.
I turn them into one-way?
One-ways and things like that, so, so you don't have, but if you think about before, if you think about within the bridge, at the bridge, in the center, you've got Channing Road, you've got Concord Avenue, you've got Leonard Street, you have three approaches coming in, you've got Common Street, you've got Concord Avenue, and there's, there's just significant volume carriers. When you try to coordinate both of those with signals, the queuing that resolves is just unmanageable.
Right.
I mean, we ran, we ran simulations, um, simulations, and, um, the queuing was, uh, it sounds like it.
It sounds like fun, yeah, I know.
For that to be.
When you stop the traffic on the Common, Concord Avenue side, the traffic on the Common Street was queued up, passing Joe, through that line, it is just, well, like I said, there may be some other things that we could do that ultimately may give us a.
But so the roundabout, back to my backyard, the roundabout by the gas station?
Yes.
Between Concord and Mill Street?
Yes.
It actually should make things flow better? That's, that's the idea, that's why people put them in?
You know what, um, better, safer.
Is that true for the Fresh Pond Rotaries? Well, that's not if they're.
Oh, they're awful.
Oh, but I mean, they're mighty.
Totally clogged.
The, the better comparable for us would be the roundabout at Grove, Washington, in, in that area, because that's a true roundabout, that is, at the single file traffic, managing, you know, managing through that location.
Grove Blanchard.
But that doesn't have, I was, well, surprised by that Rotary, because it really, there's never been that much traffic.
That's what I'm trying to say, yeah, I don't think Grove Blanchard, what's the third one, Washington?
Yes.
Is nearly as busy.
Oh, I'm sure it's not, I'm sure it's not, um, the thing about that location was there was so much real estate there, it was a sea of asphalt, and so, um, you know, we looked at conventional sort of islands and stopping this and stopping that, and then, um.
Yeah, can you remember what that looked like? Can you remember that?
I remember it being built, but I don't remember what it looked like.
I remember what it looked like.
Just so much asphalt there.
Right, no.
So the roundabout was a perfect solution.
I don't have any problem with that roundabout, I'm just not sure.
It's equal to what you're talking.
Well, I mean, the backup, because I've been in that neighborhood for twenty-five years, so the, the buildup in traffic from all those out-of-towners who really need a toll for, and they should get their tires marked or something.
So, um, so we are choosing the consultants that, that we're using on that, so they've looked at, they've taken track accounts, they've looked at the queuing, they've modeled everything, um, it'll work, it'll, it'll work great.
It'll improve the flow.
Absolutely.
And working means improving.
So, to my neighborhood.
Yeah, back to yours. We're all here for the cultural council, but let's get some of our.
Good, yeah, okay, so.
So, yeah, so.
Brighton's a horrible background.
Brighton's unbelievable, unbelievable.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you.
And it starts early.
Really is nothing.
It's tough, so, so the town.
Put a, put a, put a roundabout someplace, why not? Take out, take out the traffic lights, and put a roundabout.
Put a wall, why didn't, why didn't, wow, don't worry, this is the thing, yeah, I got the press here, I'm taking notes, I'm just kidding.
Uh-oh.
No, so, in, in the townlight traffic study that was done, one of the things that we learned was, it can take you thirty minutes to get from Pleasant Street to Concord Avenue on Brighton Street.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I've been there, I've been there.
And, 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 so, 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 so that all, so kind of intuitively, like, yeah, that doesn't surprise me, what surprises me is, with all the apps that are out there to guide people?
But they don't go someplace else.
There is no better way for these people to go than to sit thirty minutes on Brighton Street?
Well, they don't let you dash through the neighborhoods, you're not, there are all these signs, you're, you're not supposed to drive through the neighborhoods.
The other thing that was interesting, uh, and by the way, the consultant on that is going to be presenting the findings of that study to the selectmen on April first.
Of that study?
The progress study.
That's the town, that's the townlight study.
Oh, town.
So one of the other interesting things that came out of that study was, you know, there, there was always, at least with me, um, this idea that people were jumping off of Route Two and cutting through Bell.
Those are the people, they're the ones who, they're the problem.
But it's, it happened, they're coming out of Arlington on Park Ave.
On Park Ave, yeah.
Cars from Wil- from Wilmington, that's right, they're coming, right?
It's not.
So, all right, all right, so it's not, not Seaton and Wayland, it's Wilmington and.
To avoid that rotary.
It might be, but they're going through Arlington.
Yeah, right.
They're going up Pleasant Street from, like, ninety-three from Route sixteen, and they're coming, boy, now, they're gonna be coming from, like, Winchester, because they're going in, aren't they?
And so, so one of the things that, that, one of the things that was done with the study was Belmont police, in certain locations in Belmont, captured license plates, and then ran the license plates, only to find out where, where the car is garage. Okay, and so then when you look at that data and you see how many of these cars are coming, you know, from those communities that touch Arlington and, uh, and Headford and that direction there, coming out, coming in from Bell, so once again, I say to myself, okay, so we know a lot of that, that traffic is sort of originally from that region, but why aren't they getting on Route Two? Why are they coming through Bell? Because El Life is such so horrible, that it's a better alternative for them to sit.
Yeah, if you're one, suppose you're Belmont, you have to have a regional approach, and the first thing you have to do is go for El Life, you have to just figure that one out.
Well, and the Rotaries, because the, the Rotaries are horrendous.
But if you look at what's.
But just El Life subway station is also just horrible, because right there, where people are getting off.
And the Rotaries would be better and would function better if it wasn't so backed up going north on El Life and Portway, I feel, I feel like that backs up the Rotaries a lot, because it, it, it's just like a parking lot, all the way from that second, that Rotary that's closer to us, all the way up to Route Two.
Again, it's a regional approach, you have to, you have to look at several towns, that's one.
And, and no one's doing that.
But the Palmer's.
Well, and look, look at all of the real estate development up at El Life. Now, I, I, I take a bus into Hartford Square and then the Red Line, you can't even get on a Red Line train.
No, yeah, you.
Nine to five, you know, that, that commute, they arrive full.
So I live in Quincy, okay, so the end of the line, the end of the red line for us in Quincy is Ranger, and there are people in Quincy who take the red line to Ranger, to turn around and go back into Boston for that very reason, if, if they're on the platform inbound, the tr- yeah.
It's already full.
I think it's three stops, it's, it's the Ranger stop, and then it's probably two stops in Quincy before their stop, so maybe three stops.
Transform.
So, so, so look at, look at all the real estate development up at El Life.
Yeah.
Right, ba- behind, um, the, behind the shack, the summer shack, all of those.
Yeah, it's more, it's more.
You think, you think that's?
You've, you've, you've got an entire.
Well, most of them get off at Kendall, the train empties half as fast at Kendall.
Wait, what's the new thing in Kendall Square? I thought it was East Cambridge, which, what is the one?
Yeah, it's the East, it's in East Cambridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the challenge.
But this is better than being in a depressed city, where we've got violence and.
Oh, it can drink, you know.
That's, I, I, I wasn't too, so, well, it seems like it, I mean.
You know what, I, I think that's true, you know.
But if you can't get to work.
Go to the other stream, then, right, but, but there has to be happy eating this, and that, but we've gone so far past that, and so the challenge that Belmont has is, you've got, you've got these commercial uses in Cambridge and Boston that are bombing up, and they're populated by people who are living in the suburbs and the north and west of Belmont, so every day, these people have to get from here to here, and then do the reverse in the afternoon, and if it's Paul Belmont sitting in the middle of all that, what do you do?
But it can't just be us, like, I, when, when Franklin's saying, you know, this regional approach, I can't believe that there's not more of a massive outcry for it.
Listen, once again, I live in Quincy, right, so we're, we're a city, I'm not involved in anything, and I, I, you know, my wife will occasionally say to me, I knew you shouldn't go out again, but, you know what?
You got enough up here.
Right, you know, that would be, that would be like, say, a guy.
A bus mentality, they call it.
Paints houses for a living, and then on his weekends, paints someone's.
Right, exactly.
But, uh, this housing explosion.
Yeah.
I heard a story in the radio, this was probably going back two years now, all these, all the mayors were getting together, you know, seeing Boston, Cambridge, you know, Quincy, some, well, they're all getting together, you know why they're getting together? Because they're all troubled now, because all this new housing that's been built in their communities, nobody was thinking about affordable housing, so they were getting together to talk about how to build more housing units, so that they could have affordable units, and I'm saying, I'm saying to myself, you've gotta be kidding me, you have crippled this region with your development, and no one was thinking about affordable housing, so the solution now is to build more housing.
Well, actually, you know what I don't understand, because this is me doing real estate for four years, but what, different reports, and they're not just Realtor reports, that there is so many people moving to urban areas.
Yeah.
That urban areas are actually underhoused, there are, so we do not have housing for all the people that want to live here, so therefore, that's why this push to have even more development, which is gonna make things more congested, whether or not these studies are actually accurate, and I know, like, you know, if it's done by the real estate industry, it's probably gonna be saying, we need more housing, but I think they're by independent entities also.
I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think it's surprising to think that people want to live with choose, okay, but to me, it's a, it's a philosophical question, you know, what obligations do these communities have to accommodate the people that want to live in those, you know, at some point, when does the municipality get to step up and say, sorry, where is bang out as we can be? If you're looking for that experience, Worcester, go to Ranger, they're a city.
I grew up in Worcester.
They have to head over, I mean, they've got theater, they're, they're, they have the Red Sox, Mario Leaks, it's something out there.
Yeah, they're right here, thrilled about the Red Sox.
Remember, remember when Lowell was considered like, oh, go to Lowell, you can't, can't.
Oh, yeah, a lot of people buy in there, yeah. And they have pretty good affordable house, you know, houses, people can buy houses.
So instead of, instead of sort of turning the energy towards these other urban areas that, that, that maybe have the capacity to grow a little bit, everybody, and I get it, everyone wants to be downtown, they want to be in Boston, whatever, but, like I said, at what point does Boston, Cambridge, some of them, because that whole region gets so banged out that the density is just, is beyond what people can tolerate?
Well, all I know is growing up in the seventies outside of Manhattan, and if you just have a big crime rate, everyone leaves. So, if you just have a high crime rate, no one was moving into the city in the seventies, we just have to have a lot more crime in the city, and then no one will go there, I mean, that's really what, white flight.
Oh, so high crime, increase crime.
So that's the answer. Sorry, I, I think, I think probably an anonymous email that she blocked is probably where to get that, you know, I don't know what you want, what you mean by that, but.
So, so, uh, there's another twist, um, Will, uh, presented upon, um, on climate policy, that, that they, they outworn it last week, and, and he's really kind of really immersed in, in the long-term planning for the entire, the eastern part of Massachusetts, and, and he said, you know, from a, a, a carbon production point of view, cities are great, you, you could, the best thing to do, New York City is, is the best place in terms of the per capita carbon production, but you don't want to do that in Boston, because, because C-level rise is a really big problem, so, so he was saying, well, let's build up the, the satellite cities, and, and really foster.
Worcester Lowell, Springfield.
Transportation among those outlier areas around on twenty-eight, Lowell framing him.
Interesting.
I, I think, I think that's, you know, the other thing is, you know, public transportation being moving, you know, like you said, they're obviously, that's, that's gonna be.
It, it, you know, how, how can Cambridge allow all of that residential building, that impact, and then not have to contribute to, to more trains?
Right. Right.
You know, to, to the MBTA, I don't, I don't understand.
Someone from Cambridge once explained to me their philosophy on traffic, they look at traffic as a glass of water, okay, the, the glass is the capacity, the water is the actual traffic, you fill that glass up to capacity, and once that, once that water starts spilling over the edge, whether it's spilling over at three gallons a minute or thirty gallons a minute, you've already exceeded your capacity, so what's the big deal? That's, that's, that was, that was explained to me with Cambridge's philosophy.
Right, but that's Cambridge, I think we were talking about, it's like the MBTA, and the MBTA.
I think they get it, it's worse.
I'm, I'm talking about both, you know.
Because the MBTA is so screwed up on so many different levels, that it's not, like, it's a regional thing, I don't exactly know how that gets improved upon, because they're like, all of our municipalities saddled by all this pension and stuff, I mean, and some sort of poor planning, I'm.
Well, they're looking at fare hikes, and while they're doing that, they're also looking at schedule changes, which they should be more fluid and do it before they're doing a fare hike, to justify the fare hike, but.
Training design, couldn't they do double-deppers or something?
I don't think you could fit them in the tunnels.
Yeah.
You'd have to add trains.
What do I know?
You'd have to add trains, yeah, you don't take it, Nancy. But.
I drive.
Some guy I've heard on the radio, uh, said that a one penny increase in the gas tax would, would solve the.
The MBTA problems? Really? Even the pension? For, I find that.
One penny. So why hasn't that happened?
Well.
People don't like taxes.
Why? Because people like to drive their car.
And also, people view gas taxes as being regressive taxes, because they penalize the people that buying gas is more challenging for than people who.
Do you want to see the reaction to that? Go to finance, they try to increase this gas by, gas tax by like twenty cents, so you can stop driving your car, well, you had the yellow, you had the yellow, uh, twenty cents.
Yeah. That's, that's what the yellow jackets were about, you know, that, like, the commuter rail.
You know, you, you, and the, and the, you know, car, so, you're screwing it, but right now, gas is like, what, ten dollars a gas?
We did it in Europe.
But also, people are driving in rather than take the MBTA, the, the commuter rail is very expensive to those, I mean, even to Belmont, it's pretty expensive, I just take it one stop to, to Porter, I'm in a zone where it's twice the cost.
And that's my kids.
Of a commuter rail pass than me to take a combined bus subway, and you get a commuter rail and you can't use it for, um, the, the red line or the bus.
Yeah, you can use, I mean, if you go to.
People are paying four hundred bucks a month.
If you go to Germany, you just get one pass, you don't want any.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's.
Anyway.
Winter, Germany.
You folks aren't the MBTA, so.
The whole life sharing thing has been a surprise to me as well, because when, when, you know, when he first started, he's like, oh, yeah, you got one on the bill, it's gonna service multiple people, it's great, I, I didn't see it coming, you know, I didn't see the.
Right.
Why it's added?
Oh, no, no, the Uber, the Lyft.
It's become so convenient that people are not choosing public transportation.
That's right.
Or not.
It's expensive, though.
Or not, because they can, they can call an Uber, you can, you know, they don't have to walk to the station, they don't have to walk from the station.
You know, my son, when he's here in the summer and has to commute into Boston, he uses Uber for conveniences, because we live so far away from everything, for his commute, he just takes, um, the red line. I, I, he did not think that Ubering in every day, and he's doing computer science and earning ridiculous amounts of money, he did not think. I, I, he did not think that Ubering in every day, and he's doing computer science and earning ridiculous amounts of money, he did not think that was worth his money. So I, I'm not sure if people are using it for commuting, they're using it for all their extraneous stuff.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, I could be wrong, but that was his choice on it.
I don't know, I just, I see the.
Oh, yes.
What happened to taxi cabs?
They're having a tough time, McHughes went out of business, I heard.
Are they gone? Much more, I, I did a test, I came back from the airport, sixty dollars, for Uber, twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Oh, really?
And it goes right to the person, which is nice.
Not exactly, no.
No, don't, yeah.
No, don't, they only get a portion of it.
Yeah. Okay. They don't get paid a lot.
I'm gonna go. Yeah, this is.
So, here's the chart, here's the short chart.
You can go, you can go. You've learned a lot.
Julia, I only made four copies.
Perfect, there's only three of them.
All right, well, you can have one of them. And then, here's the long version, not only like three, it's if they wanna see what, what the grant is, but this is the first one.
I don't think they do.
And then I took off, you're, you're really, you had to do an excellent, and you're.
Oh, you have a score that tells every, right, and it's gonna be post done, so.
Yeah, unless, if you didn't bring it.
But I, I gotta bring it, I'm exhausted.
I had a bag of, I'm exhausted.
Okay, go, I wanna.
I gotta get up and. Put thirty and go to work.
Open space, bikes, skate parks, Belmont Light Department, Solar Light Charge, Meet Climate Action.
I'm sorry, I couldn't stick it out, I feel bad, but.
On incinerator site, on, oh, that's just on my page, my wall, old incinerator site near. Concord, uh.
They, they, they still do?
I should be told that, right? The winner is.
Shino, Shino is supposed to come tonight, she didn't come.
Who?
Shino is.
Oh, no, forgot, she never shows, but she did email me, drum roll.
Anybody.
She, she emailed the incinerator.
And she's always.
And has someone sent, and now she's been at the Gemma forever, and has someone always sent, and has she really been at the Gemma forever? Tell me, I'm just, you're not even gonna go there? Um, okay, Belmont Light Department, solar.
Yeah, he was a.
Solar array.
Hey.
Solar farm, a solar farm.
Solar farm.
Anyway, she knew later on.
And battery storage, okay, hold on.
It's cultural council, like.
What, all years away from actual existence.
Connected to that.
The other thing was, um, the sewer and stormwater and paperwork that needs to be done, um, a lot of it.
Meet Climate Action Goals, Choice Made Tonight on Old Incinerator Site at Concord, the winner is, drum roll, thank you, selectmen. And what is it, what is the winner? Um.
Solar farm, solar.
Sort of Light Department needs.
The process to get that permit.
Needs.
It's just a solar array.
No, no, he was very specific, he wanted a broad, Phil, you're Phil, Nancy, I'm Julia, um, she's on the cultural council with me.
Nice to meet you.
And I've, and I've met you with Martin, because you're, you've been big on the solar panels, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, so, so, didn't Adam really say that it's not just a solar array, what they approved tonight, and I forget your name, and I did just meet you recently, um.
John, John Marshall, the, our, our new assistant town administrator.
Your assistant town administrator, you were at Belmont Center Business Association, which is, which I'm, I'm a Realtor, because I'm staring at you thinking you're looking.
Yes, that's. Well, it's funny, I'm like, I'm.
Yeah, you know, no, you have met me, but I, I, until you said that, I couldn't remember, um, he wa- he was very specific, Adam, that it's gonna be fleshed out exactly what the use is.
Really?
Uses can include.
I heard it's a solar farm.
Uses can include battery storage, solar farm, but as the needs arise for the Light Department, it seemed to me is what he said, that get us, he wasn't saying it was just solar farm.
Yeah, it's, in, in fact, uh, the, uh, another Belmont resident, Dave Bubbers, has, has done something like two hundred different solar projects around the, around the state, and he said, turns out that, um, the capping requirement for solar.
Is minimal.
Is almost equivalent to what was better.
See, I wanted open space, I just didn't wanna argue for it.
But, but like, my point is, is that this is the, cap it now.
Because we have to.
For solar, and, and it, it'll lead you up, if the climate changes, the finances fall through, then.
It could be open space. And I don't have to stare at some sort of storage thing that looks really ugly.
But, but I really think that.
I'm shortsighted and.
Butters and all residents should just still pay attention to the process, because how, how, if, if it didn't have solar, how's it?
Exactly, that's what I'm wondering.
The, uh, the escapes, is this the way that you can arrange the top solar farm, so it can still be walkable, like, maybe whole, like, spaces.
Well, see, I have a question, about, about, no, no, I, because I was thinking about the, the whole wind farm and, 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 and I always thought that if they had made like an educational, or a, a connection to it, like, they should paint in each one of the windmills, and it would be beautiful, you could have some, I thought so, maybe you can do something with the, you know, can, maybe, you know, educate, to consider about energy and, you know, Oh, yes, yes. and or, um, do something on. But, but something that has to happen right now is what Glenn was talking about, is I'm pointing like this, it's like, I've got pictures.
Alright, then you gotta go home.
I wanna go home too, and I'm sure everyone here wants to go home, um.
What are you guys here for?
Cultural council, because we have a quorum problem and we're having trouble taking votes, because we don't have enough people that actually show up at our offices. Oh, it's gonna go, which is fine, because Adam said, come, because we wanna make sure that it happens, it's not gonna be.
So what were you pointing to down there?
Oh, you were saying that the way we level the piles right now actually matters, and when we cap it.
At the incinerator?
Yeah.
Well, what I was saying was that we have, we have a manager, you know, because now we can regrade the site, yeah, look, I mean, the site.
It, it, it all depends on engineering, right?
It does, absolutely, so.
If you, if you could have highly toxic stuff someplace, that's all, highly.
Um, yeah, no, I, I, not, not from, when you said engineering, that wasn't where I was.
I, I was thinking about doing boreholes to test, what, what actually is.
We don't have toxic cleaning tools.
Oh, that's all we, that's all.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We've been monitoring groundwater, we've been monitoring surface water for years, we're gathering that data, all of that's going into ultimately what, what will be the cap on the site.
Okay.
So, um, we just submitted a bunch of data to DEP at the end of last year, we're still waiting for comments from now on.
Oh.
So, so that means.
What we, what we're doing now is we're trying to nail down with DEP's agreement, what we think the limits are of the contamination. How far, how far is it impacting upriver downstream first?
Uh-huh.
You know, where, you know, we, we'll take a surface water sample, and we'll, we'll come back, and it'll be under the thresholds, and we'll say, you know what, we, our, our scope, our, uh, scope of where it should have extended this far.
Right, right, right.
DEP will look at that and say, yeah, we agree with you now, we don't agree with you, you know, whatever, so.
I thought a lot of it is wetlands, too.
Well, that was my point, so, the site is very well constrained by brooks, brooks and streams around it, and so, so we have to be careful with the way we do.
That's why I'm curious.
Because we can't impact that, a- a- anything that happens up there, even, even just the simple process of capping on the site, I mean.
Yeah.
It has to be done under a permit from the Observation Commission, just because of the layout that's up there.
Right. Yeah.
Um, if, if, if there's no, um, you know, no physical constraints, like, introduced up there, so routine walls, if you like.
Yeah.
If it's just strictly a matter of grading, then there's a maximum slope that you can grade to coming up from these brooks. I mean, obviously, you, you've got soil, it's, it's probably a two to one or a three to one, I don't really call it that, it is, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna grade coming out of a brook like this.
Okay. How tall are some of the piles that are there now?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think so.
I hope they're pretty high.
Yeah, they're pretty high.
They're pretty high, but like, as I said, we have the ability to move that stuff around.
And it's gonna stink to high heaven when you move it.
What is in these piles?
Oh, some of it is actually debris, it's actually composting materials.
That's in the back.
Some of that, okay, that's the stuff that I see.
The parcel, the parcel in the back, that's been an active reef compost site for some UW reef for years, ten, ten, fifteen years.
But, but the other part is ash, isn't it?
But, well, the ash is all, I mean, the ash, the ash layer starts probably, you know, I don't know, probably twenty feet below the topsoil you see out there.
Okay.
Ah.
Oh, yeah, the ash, the ash itself is, is pretty well contained on the site. The problem is, when you get, uh, precipitation and it drains through the site, it ultimately drains through the ash layer.
Uh-huh.
And that, so all the baddies with it into the groundwater, into the surface water, which is why you have to cap it, you have to, you have to stop that process.
You, you, but, yeah, no, we, no, there's, there's never been the idea that we're gonna remove soil from that, so it's always, the estimates have always been to regrade the site, keep the material hot, so.
I thought you were thinking it around.
Ah, so.
What, what happens with the water when you're like moving it, so that it's not seeping through, like?
So, so that.
Send it to Lexington, I'd be great, I'll be.
Well, that's the secret, like, it's, um, so, so now, now the precipitation comes through the site, it hits that membrane, which is the cap.
Yeah.
And then, and that, that membrane is set with pitch.
Yeah.
So, it'll hit it, it'll shed off, and it'll be gathered up in the stormwater, and it'll be system.
Oh, so like a drywall?
Um, yeah.
Something.
Yeah, um, yeah, well, yeah, maybe it's well, but, but they'll be, they'll actually be a conveyance system underground as well.
To take it where?
Um, they, they should break that into a earth, because it's clean at that point, because it hasn't.
I want a lot of the contaminant, yeah.
Oh. So it's not gonna affect the basements of the abutters?
No, no.
Yeah, yeah, just, oh, no, 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 I'm far enough away from that, I'm far enough away, so it's just some other people that are, that live there, I, I see it when I go.
If the guy, if the guy's still living, he can actually stop the signals, if he was still.
I know, I do, yeah. You'd aim it for.
I don't, I don't, don't worry about it anymore, no, um, no, it's, there's no, don't worry about that at all, don't worry about that at all.
Basically, big French races.
Do you have to, do you have, does town meeting have to vote on this?
Um, so.
If they recommend it, does?
So, so, well, so, the money, the money that's been used to do all the engineering and all the estimates, that has been in a stabilization fund? So, um, in order for us to access the money from the stabilization fund, town meeting has to hold all that, um, we did that again last year.
So it's not happening this, like, May or September?
No, no, it wouldn't be this year, that's too soon, but, so, right now, right now, there's.
Especially town meeting.
Which is the fall?
How much money is left in the stabilization fund?
How much money is the stabilization fund?
Two, two, two point.
Two point.
Two point D.
Yes.
I can't imagine.
He's got it right here.
Okay, but, but stabilization fund.
He's got the, good report, he's got the number here, what does he say, two point six? It says two point eight.
I don't have to be under the.
So, but we have to ultimately unlock the rest of that money, we will come back to town meeting to get town meeting's approval, to get.
So, so there's a seven hundred thousand dollar shortfall, if.
So right now, based on the estimate, the latest estimate was approximately three six, we've got approximately two eight, it's probably.
Okay, I think eight hundred, so, and if, if the cap is, if we start taking place until the year here now,
But they're in here. Exactly.
why doesn't the town set aside a couple of hundred thousand a year, so, so that we don't have to go to the town or do some kind of creative financing to cover that eight hundred?
So, I don't, I don't, I don't know that we're three years old, that.
Three years old?
If we're three years old, that's probably not the answer.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know that the town has the ability to do that, I just don't, I physically don't have the money to do it. Now, that's a question with which reason.
Right, Floyd said, says that there are archways that we should recover that eight hundred, so, so we don't have.
But isn't it gonna go to the schools before we ask for it?
I think, I think that what we, what we've anticipated as an means to cover that would be by the post-projuge. That's why, for example, when we were looking at skating.
Pet cemetery, et cetera.
You know, what was hoped for was that the skating rink option would fly with DEP, and then we could put some of that cost back on the people building the skating.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, there may be an opportunity to have that conversation with Belmont Light, because obviously, you're the last person standing here now, who got the post-projuge option, so, but I don't, we haven't had that conversation.
So wait, so Belmont Light, if they end up saving money, because they're able to store things, that they might contribute to the cost?
Maybe.
Maybe, so, but, the, the, the problem is, if you burden the development with the cost of capping, then, then it makes it financially a game, not, not viable, right? And that, that was a problem with, and with Digestor, and, and Skid Row, this, because it, it's, it, you know, would, would anybody bid on it, because there, there, there's an overhang of eight hundred thousand dollars that they have to cover.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that, so the same thing with Belmont Light, is, is you, you wouldn't be able to build an array big enough to cover that additional cost.
But yet, we have to do it.
I mean, there's, it's, it's a town responsibility.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, I don't think it's any question, I mean, the question was raised, the question was raised at one point, you know, what is our obligation?
Right.
We didn't own the land, why would we, we need to do that?
Yeah, why did we take it?
Um, well, it wasn't necessarily that we didn't take it, there, there was legislation that had, like, they called it verderma deposits. So there was legislation over the years that said, okay, Belmont, this is your land, as long as you use it this way, once you stop using it this way, it reverses back to the state. Um, and so, if you, if you follow that, it would change.
So why didn't we just give it to them?
I'm sorry?
Why didn't we just let them take it?
Um, if, why, it, why, and, and.
Well, because then we wouldn't have the bird to clean it up.
Because, because ultimately, what's, what was determined was because we were the primary user and we were the primary, we were the life of the venture.
Uh, we were gonna have to clean it no matter what, this is sort of what I remember from town meeting, okay, thank you.
You know.
I'm wondering, right.
Right.
Either way, we were gonna have to pay.
So, if first, that's when the town light traffic, so we can.
Good presentation.
Percentage.
Did you get the I R A of April Fool's stage?
Yes.
I can see your headline now. Traffic in Belmont is no joke.
Belmont to pay all cars.
Right.
Oh, my gosh, is, is this, is this unusually late?
On Brian's street, on Brian's street.
This is a long meeting.
Oh.
Oh, God, yes.
Well.
They're, they're. I mean, he's had gone to.
Yeah, they, they pushed eleven after on this.
This is the longest they've been in executive session, though.
Yeah.
So is this an interesting thing, has anyone put a glass to the wall?
So there's two items on it, they're doing.
There is, they're doing two executive sessions back to back.
What are they doing?
What are they doing?
One of their issues, I forgot.
The other executive session for a reason.
One was a, one was a complaint.
Oh, because, yeah, because, I mean.
It's a secret.
One was, one's secret, that's why they're in the executive session, it was a complaint, and then, um, to consider the purchase exchange, lease or value for the property, with the cure, if there is an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect
That's what my friend was asking, I remember my wife.
on the negotiating position of the public body, possible acquisition for him, oh, I wonder if that has to do with the, I mean, Anne Marie won't be there, I wonder if that has anything to do with it.
With what?
I, any of the projects, with the UW or the PPD, I'm just speculating, I have no insight knowledge.
No, 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 I know, I know, no, no, I know no one else, that's what executive session is for, and it's for, whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever it is right now, it's time consuming, thank you.
So any other questions?
Enjoy your.
Haven't solved any problems. I've given you information, but nothing.
Yeah. Oh, oh, oh. So I'm really depressed because floodplain maps have changed.
Very depressed about.
And so a property I'm selling where they haven't had a mortgage forever, um, I knew that a neighbor had just gotten like a flood certification. And they they'd gotten their mortgage reduced because they'd gotten it declared to be not, even though the map said it was a flood zone, they, this is a neighbor. So that they're now not a flood zone, so they lost whatever that extra insurance they had to do. But now this one that I'm selling, the gentleman, the ninety-four-year-old, has not done this.
There we go.
Have you heard this from homeowners? Like, what is this flood certification?
There's a process through FEMA and the flood insurance rate app program. The acronym is called L O M R. It's a letter of.
There's a process. Yep. Something that my, that one neighbor has and another neighbor doesn't.
Basically, what happens is the individual property owner does the work necessary to to make a case that they shouldn't be in the flood plain. They send it into FEMA and FEMA does, you know, looks at it and determines.
And so it takes a week to get someone? It doesn't matter because I know my neighbor did it, but my neighbor is not that clear. Um, but so it takes a week to get to hire someone to do that? And then it takes FEMA several months to actually make that declaration?
It takes FEMA a very long time.
Right.
So it's so it basically puts a stain on my property. So want a property at a discount?
Well, and I suppose in the worst cases, you just recognize that you're gonna have to pay flood insurance, right?
Are you the agent or the?
I'm the agent. No, I'm no, no, I just found this out.
In the area, they give a letter, what, letter of map revision?
That's it.
Yeah. I know, it's like when I was sort of, when I was doing like.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I know what it's.
Any idea what flood insurance costs? Because I asked my lender and he didn't get back to me.
At ten o'clock.
Yeah, no. It's really annoying.
I mean.
This gentleman's lived there since seventy-five. There's no Lorimer.
Oh.
Lorimer, when you get to that corner of Lorimer and Brookside, all those people had flood zone, just like those two, three in the corner. But now it's extended like three down for each. So people have been living there forever. Their insurance companies haven't actually looked at the new maps, so they haven't.
Well, plus if there's no mortgage, like there's only one, right?
My new buyer?
Yeah, I'm saying the people that were living there.
Even some of them who have a mortgage, they they're just no one, no one at the mortgage company is looking at the loan because they've had it forever and they're just paying it.
Yeah.
So it takes someone to review it, to study it, to have it be a problem. And I think what happened with this one neighbor is they went in for a refi. And then that's when, but for my seller, it's now just yet another reason that it's gonna be not not as easy. Know anyone who wants to live in my neighborhood? Great place to live. Want to move close by? Kind of.
So it helps the commute, but I think I think my wife lives.
Where do you live now?
Uh, near.
That sounds so bad.
It's not, it's not.
Not as bad as Quincy.
It's not a bad commute for me. It's a bad commute for my wife.
Oh, where does she live? Her work?
She works for America's Test Kitchen. She's up there.
Oh.
Yeah, they just lead their team into, um, the.
I know, it needs to be milked, right?
Oh, who's your staff?
Be a Brooklyn.
Brooklyn, okay.
My wife actually did a, uh.
What is this?
She was like an audience.
It's a, it's like a show, a cooking show.
Sounds fun. So wait, maybe he wants to live in Belmont, because that'll make her commute better.
Well, you wonder why people don't live in Belmont because they can.
Wait, why doesn't she want to live in Belmont with my neighbor and buy this house now that you know it's in the flood plain? Wouldn't that make her commute better?
We just bought a couple of years, so I think we know that it's.
Rivers like that, that whole.
I believe you. I believe you. I'm really just joking. But I was, when you said the commute, I'm thinking that.
Yeah.
Oh, no, he did. I saw much of that.
Yeah. You should bring it up to her.
Well, it wouldn't be because the traffic is so horrendous.
Shh. You are not a salesperson. No, I'm not.
You? Well, the red light, I'm gonna do it.
Hell life.
I don't think I know any of that. So she's like hell life.
Um, there, I think somebody's thinking about to break with everybody.
Oh, for the, okay.
For the second part of executive session?
Oh, this is really.
Can I give you one?
Yeah, thanks. Hopefully it'll be a quiet one tonight.
I'll suffer and you'll you'll.
Oh, they want you to go.
So the second executive session just started?
Are you like Belmont Community Media or something?
Yeah, Belmont Media Center.
Wow. And you have a job to go to tomorrow, or?
Yeah, but not until later. So I'm all set.
And are you still feeling very threatened? The media, all the local community medias, right? Aren't they?
Very threatened. Oh, yeah. We're having, uh, we actually, one of our our boss, Jeff, just went down to Washington to.
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
He's a good guy.
He's a, he's a really good guy, yeah. No, it it seems like really good night. We're gonna miss the cultural council. We're so exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice. Yeah, yeah, he, um, they've been doing a ton of work on the.
You could forget the cultural council. You could just be gone.
Unfortunately, I can't hear till the end of the meeting.
No matter what. Or they fire you? They dock your pay?
Oh, they'll they'll get mad. They can't miss anything. You'd be surprised how many things that I've like missed or like skipped that we did calls about and we, you know, demand.
Now, did you grow up here? Are you from here?
No, I'm from Everett.
You're from Everett? Much more exciting things happening in your town than here.
I'm from Everett. Casino and all that. It should be, uh, interesting, June, if it was.
Yeah. Well, you don't, you don't live there anymore?
I don't.
You do. So how'd you get involved in this place?
It's a long story. I actually.
You knew somebody.
I did an internship out here with another production company called Powderhouse Productions, which is also located in Belmont. And I met a few people through that that helped me, um, with recommendations for the Belmont Media Center. And so I just ended up back here.
So is this a full-time job?
No, I'm part-time.
Part-time?
Yeah, but.
With some of the work that was.
But it's a good enough gig.
Yeah, it is a good enough gig for sure for now. I mean, I live, I live at home, so I don't have any expenses.
Wow.
At the moment, so I'm just kinda saving up.
And film media is your thing?
Yeah.
That's what you're doing?
Yeah, I went to, I went, lived out in Los Angeles.
U S C? With all the fancy folks?
No. I was actually, it was part of an internship. I went to Curry College here and I went and did an internship at the American Film Institute of Los Angeles.
Oh, sounds, sounds fun. You know, I've got a cousin's kid, so I guess like a nephew, who's living in Brooklyn and trying to like, you know, do the dream. He's making short films that are very artsy.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. That's, it's, it's a struggle.
Art is a struggle.
Very competitive field and everybody, you know, I'm actually, I'm gonna be part of doing a film shoot here.
I know, you're like, I don't wanna see.
I don't know what to think about that. Yeah.
Who?
Ivy Road, Paramount TV, um.
And it's gonna be called Ivy Road?
No, that's where they're shooting.
Oh.
Ivy Road.
Oh. What's it about?
We don't know, but they told us that somebody who recently starred in superhero films who wants to branch out is from this area is going to be on set.
That sounds interesting. Who was, who was that be?
Probably Chris Evans. I don't wanna say that.
Oh, yeah, Chris Evans was, um, one of the superheroes. What was he?
Captain America.
Captain America, right.
Uh, I don't wanna.
Now, I'm trying to remember which which road is Ivy Road. I know I've been on it. But that sounds fun.
Yeah, that'll be the end of April.
Yeah. Well, you watch Brooklyn Nine-Nine?
No, I don't. I should. I've heard, I've heard a lot about it. My friends watch it.
Oh, you have to watch Brooklyn Nine-Nine, but they have the Belmont Police Station is in their open credits because that's, because it's supposed to be the most boring town there is and it's just, it's up, going up, conquered up. It's pretty, like you can imagine. Probably ten years ago, they filmed it, but.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Oh, you have to watch that show. It's very funny.
Yeah, we can watch it just for that.
Just for that, exactly. That's when you're thinking about Belmont on film.
Yeah, that's funny.
You know, then one day I was driving through town and you know the historic home that's across the street from the, um, the police department?
Yeah.
So I'm part of that. It's the women's club.
Yeah.
And they made a rental with people from B U. So they had like the huge lights out there and we were all sort of driving on Pleasant Street going, what's going, what's going? I don't, there was, there was no one famous. That was just like students doing it.
Yeah, that's cool.
But Paramount, there was a show that was on Paramount TV, but I don't understand that station. Like, it's got like three shows or something? It's not?
It used to be Spike. And then, and then they changed.
Oh. Oh. But I'm trying.
It was Spike TV.
This was, the one I was watching had, um, oh, it was like a seventies show about a woman who left her.
That could all be wrong.
Um, I'm trying to think about what it was called because now I haven't, it was just this year. Paramount, Paramount TV. It was the person who was in, oh, shoot. Terrific TV shows. I'm gonna. No, he's, he's amazing, isn't he?
I don't know how he does.
American woman. It was like, you know, like a woman who goes through divorce in the seventies.
Interesting.
Sort of like, you know.
Yeah.
Very stereotypical, but it was, it was somewhat good. Blue Mountain State, God, there's all these, oh, I see, these are all.
Oh, well, State. Oh, well, yeah, that, that was, that was on like, uh, U P N or whatever it was called, like way back in the day.
Really? Wait, what do you?
Yeah, it was Blue Mountain State. It's.
It says, yeah, two, two thousand ten and eleven, but it's calling it Paramount, so maybe it was on a different channel.
Which one's that?
Heather's, which I.
Oh, Heather.
Yeah, I have that.
You've seen the movie?
I have to have, yeah.
Such a great movie. Yeah. Shows, I've seen this movie, Monsters, which is, I'm very stupid.
Well, I know that you said U P N or I don't know if it was.
Oh, maybe, yeah, there's so many different stations, though.
That's where all the old Star Trek shows, some Exteration Voyager, which they said they'll broadcast on U P N, and then they changed it into Spike, and then they changed it back to Paramount TV.
I know if there was. That's a, yeah, lipstick battle. I never watched any of those. Feeling supposed to like suffer and show that I can suffer. It's like you have to prove, though, you stay this late, you know? Does anybody, do you have a real belief? So, um, cultural council, um. But, okay, let's see. Belmont Youth Commission.
I mean, what's interesting is the cultural council will probably take about five months.
Oh, I know, I know.
So why couldn't it have just done?
I know.
And then they did the executive.
I know. Because they, they don't love us.
But that they, um, this is like the, um, they made those movie producers hang around during the whole anaer, was it the anaerobic digester discussion?
Oh, really?
It was like.
The, the anaerobic digesters.
For like, for like ten minutes to talk, you know?
They need to do soon.
Yeah, they're gonna be in town filming, um, something. I can't, I can't, I think it's.
Oh, I see they will have.
Yeah, they were, they were, they were, they needed to get permission to approach the residents about.
Yeah, it was Ivy Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So Phil, why are you staying? What are you excited about?
Ivy Road, um, it's, it's, um, based on a novel that was seven years ago.
Because I have been been trying to catch up with Patrice for two weeks.
Well, you think she's gonna wanna talk to you at ten thirty tonight?
And so that's a stupid, and it, and a woman from Downnatchee.
I'm not gonna let her go.
What's your issue? What's your issue? What do you wanna talk to her about?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm working on set for that.
How does she like her job? What's her commute? No, I know, I'm joking. No, that's not what you would do.
I'll talk to the phone people. Yeah, it should be, it should be interesting. It should be a lot of fun.
I know.
God, no. How did you like your job?
I hope she likes it.
Chris Evans seems like a good guy.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, I mean, she, she, she's.
He wants.
He's a really busy man and.
She's very hardworking.
My friend Jordan was in, in that movie he did for about the girl who's the math genius.
And sometimes, um, she, she, she was calling back. I think it's a lot of.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, my friend Jordan, he's a, he's a math professor.
I think this is.
Yeah.
So they brought him in to consult on the film and then they needed a scene with a math professor.
Counselor, I just wanted.
About on the Go electric or solar?
Why don't you just do it?
It's, it's not, it's not.
Make something. So it's like the, the scene at the end of the movie where he's like in a college classroom with a math professor. It's like, one of my oldest friends.
Wow.
Just educate me. As long as I'm here and I'm out and about. Keep, keep educating me. What's the Cheneris Solar issue?
The, so Belmont Co. Solar, the first round of Belmont Co. Solar was so successful that the installer.
Oh, right, offered.
Offered to put an array on, on any town building that towns choose at no, no cost.
Because Newton South had this. Yep. Right. Right. But actually getting it done has seeming to be rare.
Well, we, they were all, we, we went through the, through the selection process. We, we identified the, the, the south-facing side of, of the Cheneris Gym as being ideal, perfect. The Butters loved it. It was, it was, it was great. They were all set to go. We went, went through the, the, uh, we got out, we applied for the, for the, uh, for full site plan review with the planning board. We actually had a, our very first meeting with the planning board. And the day after the, that first meeting with the planning board, the installer announced that they were withdrawing from, from the small array market.
Oh.
And doing only commercial, therefore.
Bummer. Bummer.
So, so.
So you had to start from square one?
Well, they, they, uh, they agreed and, and they, they volunteered to, to give us money in lieu of installing the array. So, so we got twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Which is meaning less and less as time goes on.
Pardon?
Which is meaning less and less as time goes on.
No, well, I mean, it's sitting in an escrow.
But no, no, but is it still more than enough to get the job done?
Well, then, then, an anonymous donor, an anonymous resident, um, offered fifteen thousand dollars.
You're funded.
gave fifteen thousand.
Who is this resident?
I know. We wanna find them for the arts.
And there's, there's a new state instead of program. That's, that's another thirteen thousand dollars. So we've got enough so that it's not gonna cost the town a penny. It'll, it'll, the whole thing will be completely, no, no cost.
And the selectmen have already approved it.
Is the group okay up there?
Pardon?
And the selectmen have already approved it?
Well, well, they, they accepted the, the gift and so that's good. So that's sitting in this escrow account. It's all set to go.
It was earmarked.
Um, and so I went before the school committee in, I've lost track now, twenty seventeen, so this, this spring of seventeen. And, and they voted to move the project forward to the planning board. So I went back to the school committee to say, could you?
I know, exactly. Hold on, I'm just listening. I know, I know. Continue, continue.
Can you, can you, um, vote on it? And, and I, and I, we understand that the, um, that superintendent failing is completely maxed out with, with this new, with overcrowding and, and the new high school. And Steve Darance, as you know, he, he's maxed out. So, so.
Steve Darance is this new assistant guy?
Steve, Steve Darance, no, Steve Darance is, is the director of facilities.
Don't even know who he is. Continue.
Okay.
He was just here, actually. He was here.
He was part of the thing.
Sitting on.
Down here like a sort of.
And, um, all the classes, a little, little heavy, heavy stack.
Anyway, continue.
Yeah, but he was here earlier.
Oh, but I don't know if you guys were. Really good, but again, there, it's not properly, the facilities department isn't properly funded. There, there are so many projects that can't.
We were here. Oh, they can't.
They can't do because they just don't have the staff to.
Does facilities work out of D P W? Where do they work?
They, facilities, uh, Steve Darance's office is, I think, is over in the basement of the former building.
So basically you have to get on his task list.
So this is, you're telling me you remember, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is a really interesting thing. There was, remember the consolidation that took place?
I think I've only been there for four years, but it happened slightly before I came up.
Right, so, so there was, there was.
School had one, town had one. Now we just have everything one, not working.
Exactly. Right. So, but the problem is, so, so, so you have one facilities director reporting to Patrice on the town side and also reporting to, to superintendent on, on the school side.
Sounds like an Amy Poehler Parks and Rec kind of story.
There's just not enough. And, and so now, now this is a tug of war between with limited resources. So, so anyway, Patrice had the brilliant idea, why don't we see if, if Chris Roy would be the project manager?
Of Chris Roy.
Chris Roy is, is, is the new climate center general manager of Belmont, like fantastic.
Oh.
Yeah, and really like state proponent of.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so take it away from facilities, put it into Belmont.
Well, just, just offer to, to let Chris Roy be the project manager for this thing. So that it wouldn't, so that, that facilities department wouldn't, wouldn't have to, to, you know, usher this thing through the.
And this was Patrice's idea.
And, and the, or, you know, would, would, um, superintendent fail him, you know, just, just let, let them do it. And.
Right.
Let's just let it get in the happen.
And then, but then the question is, what, the question is, who owns the array? If, if Belmont Light is the petitioner to the planning board, then would, would he be, would, would Belmont Light own the array? And then if that's the case, what are, what are, what sort of legal documents would govern the situation where you have a third-party piece of equipment on a school roof? Not just any town building, but a school, because, because schools are governed by those bigger concerns about safety of the kids and, and so forth.
So have you looked at Newton South? Because I'm curious how they did it.
Well, so it turns out that there are a lot of public schools that, that have third-party owned arrays.
Right. But you had to look it up.
And, and so that's where we are right now, is that John doesn't wanna move forward until he gets some sort of legal opinion about what, what are the potential ramifications of.
See, I didn't understand the legal opinion tonight. What did we need his legal opinion for?
We didn't. He says he's given it over and over and over again.
No, no, but it was about which issue?
It was about the, the clock on the, on the church and I was.
What was the, what was the legal opinion? It's a community preservation improvement project. And why were they concerned that it needed legal?
Well, because it's on a church.
Well, because, because it, it opens the, the town up, up to potential lawsuit of somebody, somebody claiming that, that we're, we're supposed to be a separation of church and state.
What separation? So we're not, we're not supposed to use community preservation for any religious organizations? Really? Did not know that.
Exactly.
Well, no, that's not the case.
But in this, this case, this is, this is not for a, a religious thing like my stained glass. This is for a clock.
Got it. That's what we got why.
That, that the town owned and sold.
So what's the liability concerns on a school roof?
Well, there was some ladder. What was this? They could have had a ladder.
Yeah, no, there's a ladder in type.
Yeah, the, the ladder is really rickety. Do you remember Marty Cullen, the, the.
She's not town, she's not town meeting.
Okay, okay. Marty, Marty. Okay, okay, Marty, Marty Cohen.
But you might be, no, 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 I'm joking, I'm joking, anyway.
And that's what's been a town meeting for years.
Right, right. Exactly, and now he lives with my neighbor.
Oh, does he? Okay.
Yeah, he lives at Canterbury or whatever.
And, and so, so currently, like once a week, for his, for decades, he took it upon himself to climb that little rickety ladder and, and.
Oh, really?
And wind the clock.
Oh, what a cutie.
That was, and, and I think the town gave him some kind of small stipend for, for trouble.
I did not know he did. I don't remember that clock, it would do the quarter hour and the half hour and stuff, and, and it didn't, doesn't do it anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
It's broken.
Now, now, it, it.
I never heard about that.
Now, it's, it's accurate two times a day.
Wow, so, but what's the liability on a roof?
Are, are we shifting back to, to Chenner and Solar?
Yeah, the school.
So, um, oh, and anyway, just back on, on, on the clocks, so, so because it's a clock, it does, not a religious symbol that's.
Right, right.
And the town bought the clock initially.
And the town bought the clock originally, and.
And gave it to the UUs?
It's a little bit ambiguous about, back and forth, but George is saying that, that there is a risk that somebody, what, a, a resident would complain.
It doesn't even have to be a resident, I think, yeah, I think that anybody, I mean, and there are people who file lawsuits about anything like that, just because they have a point group, but, um.
It wouldn't even have to be a resident, right?
Yeah, yep.
Right.
But, you know, the separation of church and state is not quite as, um, black and white as people think it is, so, you know, I mean, there, there are things that are appropriate. Like, you know, when you're talking about historic separation and stuff, I think that George has the right tack on this, in that it's like, it, it's not, we're not restoring like windows with big pictures of Jesus. You know, this is a clock that the town bought and retained as a store value to the town, and, and it, and is a community asset to some extent, you know, so, so, um, but that, but George is, I've, I've sat in several meetings now where George has expressed this opinion. Why do we have to have to say?
You know what, I, I think actually, if Mark did that, and I know he did do it tonight, he's doing it to make sure that anyone.
Everybody knows, yeah.
Anyone who's tuning in for the first time.
Yeah, exactly.
Hears that the selectmen have made that consideration.
Yeah.
Because they are like walking targets.
Oh, yeah, all the time, yeah.
All the time.
So, yeah.
Why anyone would wanna be that walking target, I don't know.
And I hope that Mark agrees.
Get, get ready to be a walking target, cause I was talking to Mark's wife, and she was like, as soon as he became a selectman, I would like go to the supermarket, and I'd say, Mark, stay in the car, don't get out of the car, I'm running in for some milk. And she would come back, and the window would be down, and someone would be talking to him, saying, ah, 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 and I remember walk, going to the supermarket, and Anne Marie was a selectwoman, and something horrible, was she a school committee before she was a selectwoman?
She was.
Yeah, so I think it was when she was a school committee, something contentious had happened, and she was lambasted, not by Franklin, cause he wasn't doing it, but by the Citizen Herald, which was the main rag at the time, and I was just like, so how you doing? Cause I mean, I don't know her from a hole in the wall, but you know, she, all these people like you, who sort of like being in the public eye, you must enjoy that sort of position of power, I don't know, but to.
Well, it's not, it's not even so much the power, it's just that I, I really enjoy the process of like, so if I see that something needs to be done, I wanna do something about it, and so I like the process of getting involved in that stuff.
But I think you get, no, but see, I think what Adam said is, that, what he was sort of saying right there, and he was trying, like, you're damned if you do or you're damned if you don't.
Exactly.
He really wanted to make sure that this was a fair and open process for the incinerator, but when it came down to it, they're, on social media, they're getting killed for having wasted eight thousand dollars with that feasibility, you, you guys are on the same sites I am. Feasibility study before there was even a possibility that that could actually happen.
Actually, there was a possibility that could have happened, that, that was the problem.
Because D cam wasn't clear?
Exactly.
So, so how come you didn't chime in on that complaint? Cause people are criticizing left and right, there's, there are people that really just like to be mean on, oh, look, we're up.
Oh, my god.
And don't you feel for them? They look so happy, and so refreshed, they took a shower, they rested. You convinced me that it was better for me to stay than to go.
Are you having fun?
We are, it's been very informative.
We discussed everything there is to talk about.
We are so much more informed.
We fixed the traffic problem.
We fixed everything.
Glenn, Glenn, Glenn Louie does that many topics before he left.
Yes.
He's been lost on the way.
I'm not his trooper.
Do they really want this? I think they might.
Very sorry.
I don't know.
They desperately want this.
Thank you, George.
I know.
Good night, see you.
Thank you. Well, actually, I'm actually glad.
I don't know.
I'm just a chairman.
And he's really close, do you ever have to turn to, um, the cable channel, which I think there are ladies that we're on, and he speaks, he's so awesome, couple people that I almost always want to speak to.
Just tell you, Jesse?
I hope I can.
I'm just proving that I can hold out to the end.
I'm here another two hours, yeah, but no, but hang on, just.
Hopefully less than five minutes.
We're in there.
We were, we were talking about all sorts of other stuff out here.
Yeah.
A lot of NIMBYs.
I'm asking for overtime pay, I'm exhausted, now, let's go.
You can give me another five dollars.
Yeah, I'll give fifty cents, maybe a cup of coffee.
Welcome back to the March eighteenth, for now, Board of the Bell, Belmont Board of Selectment Meeting, um, next item, accept resignation from youth commission member Dr. Jeffrey Speller. Who has, um, had to unfortunately, uh, go out of town for periods of time, and that's not going to, uh, serve unfortunately, served a very short period of time, but I thank him for his service, motion to accept.
Thank you for your service.
What? Motion to accept his resignation?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion on possible appointment to Belmont Youth Commission, now that he has resigned, we have an opening.
So, update on this.
Yeah.
The chairman is out of town, so he was not able to get back to us, I think the rest of the names are all students, so we might.
No, I don't think so, not.
You wanna appoint someone, I'm happy to.
Well, this Andrew Mountford, who works the lead nonprofit organization with Basic, with the Mission of Youth Engagement, with seventeen years of experience now, and, um, out of school time, Phil, I don't think that he could, he would be a high school student, but nevertheless, I don't have a resume, I, I mean, our, our appointment rules do say that we approach the chair of the committee, however, we did approach the chair of the committee, he's just not here. Um, I was looking, so I was looking at Andrew Mountford, you're right, the vast majority of them are high school students, of which we already have, I think, three on the committee, and that's enough.
You wanna take it from the chair on this? I don't really care.
That's the, well, you're leaving, that's why you don't care, that's the.
See, because he says it, or at least.
I guess the question, I, I always think it's valuable to hear from the chair, is there, is there a reason why we do it now, as opposed to just?
We can wait.
Why don't we just wait and pick it up?
Isn't this the chair?
No, that's the, so, that's the council, the, uh, cultural council, that's next.
Oh, I'm another one, oh, that's another one, oh, jeez.
We're in tab twelve.
Well, who's the chair?
David Alba.
David Alba.
Oh, that's right, yes, of course, Dr. Alba.
So, so, yeah, why don't we?
All right, so we table that one, all right.
We should hear from David, I know, actually, but, I respect David's point of view, so let's hear from him.
Discussion and vote to remove Grace Peng from the cultural council, come on up.
Move, move to remove her.
All right, hold on, we're gonna get.
No, no, I was just gonna come on up, unless.
Please.
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up.
Cause these two items deal with you.
Yeah, fifteen, fifteen seconds.
Well, these, although, the, yeah, the final three items are all related to the cultural council.
Put your thing, put your thing on.
There you go. Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Juliet Jenkins, town meeting member and chair of the cultural council.
Hello.
And exceptionally patient.
Thank you.
With, with Nancy Lindy and exceptionally patient, remember.
Hi, Nancy.
Well, to be fair, she, she did say that she couldn't make it early in the meeting.
Nice to see you.
That's why we, you said, put me at the end, so.
Who knew, who knew, but, but I, you know what, we're just here.
Nevertheless, so.
No, no, he told me that they were very full.
So, great, anyway, Grace Peng, uh, has, um, missed more than three consecutive meetings, and that, under our policy, I think we.
Have we spoken to this, um?
We've tried, I can't reach her, I called.
Does she know she's been appointed to this committee?
She came to one meeting, and we, I talked to her before, cause she missed the first one, and I think something must have gone on in her life, cause she doesn't respond to emails or phone calls.
Well, we can send her a letter and thank her and remove her.
Yeah, so, so we need a motion?
Then we remove, uh, Grace Peng, um, as a member of the cultural council for having missed three consecutive meetings.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and vote to appoint new members of the cultural council, in this, in this case, we have the chair.
Yes, we can.
So, we have.
So, we only have one person, oh, you have somebody?
We got another one in. Yeah, Vicky Amalfitano.
Amalfi, we have more than that.
Oh, that's so exciting, cause I don't know them.
That's another one that came in.
Oh, look at that.
That's another one that came in in addition to the others.
So someone I spoke to, cause someone on the council knows, is Ani Hofseppian, and her husband did serve Gerard on our committee.
Oh, let's appoint her if she's terrific, right?
Yeah, we've got someone.
I just spoke to her tonight, she was terrific, but, um, I think that, sort of alongside of appointing people, we were talking about the size of the committee, partly because maybe I was being too conscientious, and I was concerned about quorum, we've had some attendance issues with our committee, and we're often not at fifty percent plus.
That's our next agenda item.
So we're just gonna do this first.
Well, we're gonna get to that, it's our next agenda item, right now, we're filling a vacancy.
Okay. But anyway, this is someone who lives in town and wants to serve on the committee, and knows something about public health and marketing.
Who's this?
Uh, Vicky, uh, this is a Vicky Amalfitano.
So the other one was Gerard's hu- wife?
Yeah, Gerard's wife, who I just spoke to on the phone, and she has not put together a.
Did she apply?
She has not put together a resume yet, but I'd like, so yeah, if you don't have a resume, you can't, I can, you can't.
I don't know, we don't have an application, so.
We have an application from Vicky, uh, uh.
This is, we just got a resume.
Yeah, it's in our book.
Yeah.
She's in our book.
Yeah, okay, so then.
We got some follow up.
Vicky?
No, she's, just right here.
Right, but you don't see a resume.
Well, you don't see always the resumes, but I mean, she's in the, she applied.
Where's the application?
Do we have any other names? Just out of curiosity?
You mean, I like the application, but she applied.
No, that's the only one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the only one.
This is the application right here?
That's the resume that came in.
So, but her resume came in late.
Did you get a resume?
Her resume came in late.
Right here, I have two of them. Where's the application, though?
And she, oh, she does GBH, so.
She's on the list.
You wanna think about it, Julian, come back, recommendation?
Or do you wanna, or you want us to, we could fill you, fill it up right now?
But, but Adam, we're, we're decreasing the number of members, why are we appointing new members?
We're decreasing the quorum.
We're making a quorum so they can have.
Like we did with the youth commi- cause we did that with the youth commission where we set a quorum.
So we're not decreasing the number of members, we're just deciding.
Right now, we're going by the state.
Well, I think we legally can, but we can set a quorum.
We need to set a quorum.
Which is the second agenda item.
You can do that?
We did with the youth commission.
Okay.
The state allows up to so many members.
So, it's up to you, whatever you wanna do.
I mean, I, I don't have any, I mean, Vicky seems to have a skill set you don't, you don't have on the committee.
I'm more than willing, if someone actually is interested in serving on this committee, interested in reviewing grants.
Why don't we appoint both of them?
Yeah.
Not even number, but we could.
We want an odd number, so that's.
You don't have an even number, then, don't, won't you?
That's okay.
No, cause we have, we have, we're.
We never have everybody show up.
We never have everyone show up.
That aside.
We're at twelve, we're at twelve, without Grace, we're at eleven, we have John rolling off in June, so we're at ten.
So Ms. Hofseppian and, um, Ms. a, a doctor, Ms. Ms. Amalfitano.
I'm all for it, yeah.
I move that we appoint both of them to the cultural council.
Yeah, because who knows what our other roll offs will be.
And when, when June occur, when the June resignation occurs, roll off occurs, we can reappoint or not, depending on how it seems to be.
I move that we appoint.
Right, although I think if you do two, two, three year cycles, we're.
Well, well, first of all, what's, what, what is Grace Peng's, um, remainder of her term?
She just started, so she would have up to three years.
Oh, so they're both.
So I move that we appoint, um, Hofsepp.
Ani.
Ani Hofseppian.
To Grace Peng's remainder of her.
To Grace Peng remaining term, and I move that we appoint Vicky Amalfitano to a three year term.
Oh, perfect.
Amalfitano to a three year.
Okay.
The cultural council.
I will second that.
Sounds great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, last item, discussion and vote to change number of members and the size of, uh, required for a quorum for the cultural council, so we don't have to necessarily change the number of, I was thinking of saying the quorum itself.
What do you want, three, three, how many people show up, like two and a half, three? You got twelve members, three show up, if you're lucky.
Well, so I was working really hard to get seven to show up, and we had a couple of meetings.
What do you want for quorum, five?
Oh, see, this is what I don't, I thought it had to be more than fifty percent.
Apparently, we can designate a number.
However, I mean, I don't think it'd be tough to go.
Well, if it's a majority, then we don't need to designate a number.
We're not gonna have thirteen, no, we're gonna be twelve, because Grace is rolling off at the same time this one person's coming up.
And then we added one, oh, so twelve, okay.
What's the purpose of voting for change, if it, if it's just normal sort of, uh, quorum?
Five would be so helpful.
I move that we, I move that we, uh, can we, we can do this?
Any thoughts, Patrice?
I think you guys should appoint what you think you're gonna be able to get a quorum for, so how many usually show up at your meeting?
If we're lucky and we work really hard, we have about half of them, because we have performing artists.
Half of eleven?
Half of our twelve, we have performing artists.
Six, so I think five's a good number.
I don't want you to have to work really hard, I mean, obviously work hard, but you shouldn't be prevented from doing the work that you need to do.
No, agreed, especially if people are, you know, I'm sure people are busy.
I think when the, when their terms are up, you should remind us who's not showing up.
I agree.
When we reappoint people, cause we don't have to.
I could have warned you about that.
I think we should go with five.
We, we.
Yeah, I think an odd number is good.
So I move that we, uh, vote to, um, that we approve, um, well, I move that we vote to change the number of members and the size required for a quorum for the cultural council to five.
Well, we're not changing the number of members, we're just.
I move that we change.
We're setting the quorum.
Quorum for the cultural council to five members.
That sounds great.
I second that.
Appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye. If you come back and said we can't get five, then we got a problem.
You're gonna be, right, well, I mean, anyone who's watching this show, please be in touch with us, because we would love to talk to you about your interest, we do have lots of information, if you haven't read my annual reports.
It's a wonderful committee, it's just, I'm sure people are really busy.
And you want all this stuff, exactly.
What can we do to facilitate, you know, meetings?